That is not on the agenda, now is your time.
Good morning, Bill McManus, Hanford Hill. Back on January 31st of this year, a poll was taken of the board supervisors regarding a draft ordinance concerning marijuana and what we're going to do about it. During that poll, the board, the will of the board was expressed to come up with a comprehensive ban, banning all activities except that which is explicitly provided by law. As we read, the only law that would have any effect at that, at that time would be Prop 64. Prop 64 has no jurisdiction over what this county does, with the exception of allowing indoor growing in dwellings, starting January 31st, or January 1st, 2nd actually. In talking with a couple supervisors and complaining that nothing was being done, we found, and just prior to that, staff did release a draft of the ban ordinance, and we found it to be nothing like what the board had asked for. Subsequent to the original poll, several polls were taken after that, with very clear instruction given to staff that this was to be a comprehensive ban, and it isn't. So getting back to a couple supervisors then asked me and the committee to put together some changes for the draft ordinance that would bring it in line with what the will of the board was and still is. So we put together some changes to the draft ordinance and submitted it. Prior to that, we also came up with information on why we think the ordinance is deficient. First of all, it doesn't reflect the will of the board. Second of all, it exempts dispensaries from the ban. So the spiral-bound document that you have explains the dangers of having dispensaries in this county. Within a new context, Proposition 64 has defined some new license types, which did not exist under AB 266, one of those being microbusinesses, which is a type 12 license. They've retained the type 10 and type 10A licenses for dispensaries, which also provide for cultivation. That cultivation is not required to be indoors. The acreage that they express, I mean, it is expressed in acreage, not square feet. So type 10A dispensaries can have three locations and a full acre of outdoor growing to supply their dispensary, so they qualify as a commercial cultivator. If you hold a type 10A license, you're allowed to hold up to three of them. So you could have three dispensaries and up to four acres of growing, so that clearly should be included as banning commercial cultivation. Beyond that, microbusinesses have popped up, and in Prop 64, you will find a definition of microbusiness, which includes almost every activity allowed by all the other license types, but they attempt to put some limit on the size of it, and it's going to be restricted to businesses of less than 10,000 square feet. Whether that storefront grows, we don't know. In the meantime, the Bureau of Marijuana Control, which I think is now the Bureau of Cannabis Control, has issued regulations which will combine 266 and 64. I believe 266 has gone away with a center bill, it might be 110, I'm not quite sure, where 266 folded into Prop 64 because they were duplicate laws, or whatever you want to call them. Along with that, the Bureau of Regulation, of Marijuana Regulation or Control, has issued more regulations, and within those regulations, they reserve the right to create more license types, if they haven't got enough already. So what you'll find in the revision or the suggestions that we have is that the county banned by license type, not individual titles, for existing license types and for any future license types that the Bureau might come up with. All of that is backed up in code, and I can give it to you, and some of it's in the, in the material already, that Prop 64 allows the jurisdiction, which is the county, to ban all license types. You are not required to approve anything in this county. Even extending beyond, there's a myth right now that you can't control growing that's outdoor or outside of a dwelling on your property if it's within a certain type of structure. I can provide you with the citation in Prop 64, where the power and authority of the county is preserved, that you can regulate all the way up to banning outdoor growing on the property, regardless of what's going on in the dwelling. So anyway, it's been rumored that this thing is going to come moving forward. It would hit the Planning Commission first. I want to give you the benefit of looking at the material first, because we will be here to press the Planning Commission to change the ordinance, or approve changes to the draft ordinance, that is in line with the will of the board supervisors. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, if you want to talk afterwards, that's fine. If you need any information, I've included my card in the black pamphlet, where you can email me, and I'll get back to you with any particular citations, or anything else that you might need, if you have, need something cleared up. Anyway, that's it, thank you.
One factual question, is this a duplicate of what you gave us?
It may be a duplicate, I'm sorry, I don't know who got what.
Well, you gave, you came to a Planning Commission meeting.
I do a lot of stuff, and I can barely remember what I did this morning.
I don't want to read something twice.
No, if, you can either throw it away or give it to somebody. I think Planning and County Council have already been given the same document. I don't know about the proposed changes. If you'll note, we recently, we took the ban, proposed draft ban, and left it intact and made changes to it, which are noted in red and strike-throughs for things that need to be removed, or that we would recommend be removed. So you'll have the benefit of seeing what County Council and Planning came up with, that we're opposed to, and don't think fulfill the will of the board, and what the changes would be to that, rather than just restating it and having, you know, you trying to figure out what changed between both versions.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda and approval of minutes for the July 13th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Do any of the commissioners have any changes to the minutes?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I move we approve.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries 5-0 on the minutes. And now we will move into our public hearings, and we'll be starting with E1 2016-802. And Ben, you're gonna submit or present that one?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Good morning, Commission, Ben Diamond, Planning Department. Today we have Appeal 2016-802, Luigi de Dominicus, Appealing the Denial of Commercial Cannabis Cultivation Registration Application, 2016-802 by the Planning Director. This grow is located at 5920 Railroad Flat Road in Mountain Ranch. It's a 5.01 acre site, and it is for 22,000 square feet of outdoor cultivation. This application was denied because it was found to contain false or misleading information pursuant to County Code Section 17.95.170A4, and failing to meet the photographic evidence requirements pursuant to County Code 1795165N3A4B, and failing to meet the grading requirements pursuant to 1795165N7. So, starting off with the photo that was submitted with the application as its photographic evidence, that cultivation was occurring prior to May 10th. Throughout the appeal letter and the additional letter that was submitted on June 6th, it references photos, and I want it to be clear, this is the only photo that was submitted with the application. So through this, we are supposed to see that cultivation in commensurate with 22,000 square feet of canopy was taking place on the subject parcel. And the only information we can really glean from this is that it was a picture taken on May 3rd, and that there is a significant number of young cannabis plants in the photo. Since it is inside a carport, it's kind of impossible to tell whether or not it's actually on the parcel. So the first thing staff did in reviewing the application was looking for the carport. And of course, it didn't show up in any of the aerial imagery, and when the appellant was questioned about that, he claimed that it was put up on May 1st, and it came down on May 13th, after which the clones were let to full sunlight to continue growing. So the shed likely wouldn't be visible in any of the aerial imagery, which is understandable, our flights were somewhat limited, but of course, we couldn't find any evidence that the young plants were left out, so it seemed unlikely that this picture was taken either on the parcel or on May 3rd. And because of that, it was deemed false or misleading information, and therefore, the application was without satisfactory photographic evidence that cultivation was occurring on the parcel prior to May 10th. The other ground for denial is grading after May 10th, 2016, as evidenced by aerial imagery, which we'll get to in a bit, and documentation that was provided to the Central Valley Water Quality Board, and the appellant claimed in the appeal letter that the grading started before the 10th but finished afterwards. However, in the June 6th letter submitted by the appellant, it was claimed that that was a mistake made in a rush to get the appeal letter into the Planning Department on time. So, going over the documentation that was provided to the water board, for this tier of cultivation, you have to provide a biological site assessment, cultural resource inventory, and a site management plan. The BSA does list cannabis as detected in Appendix 2 of it, which is at the very end, but if you pay attention to Appendix 2, it is listed as cannabis SPP, which in a biological study such as this means an unknown number or species of cannabis was detected. So it's unclear how much cannabis was there, or if it was strictly cannabis, since the cannabis SPP can occasionally be used to refer to the entire cannabis plant family, which includes over 207 different species of aromatic herbs. So, there's that, and these site surveys were performed on July 12th. There should definitely have been cannabis on the parcel by July 12th. Our contention is that there was not a 22,000 square foot operation on the parcel prior to May 10th. So here is an aerial view of the parcel with a topographic layer overlaid with five-foot contours, so it's not the steepest parcel, but it's definitely not flat, so some leveling should have occurred, and according to all of the documentation that was provided to the water board, there was some terrorsene grading and tree clearing done, which makes sense. There's a significant hill with, as you can see, a drainage on the side there, which is a class 3 drainage, an unnamed ephemeral stream. And these are some photos from the July 12th site survey. As you can see, as of July 12th, the smart pots were still being filled, no plants in them, no fencing was erected, none of the irrigation was in place yet, so even as late as July 12th, the site had still not been fully established. And here is a picture also from the July 12th survey, that shows the, underneath the trees portion of it, you can see the drainage down there, so we're looking kind of from the side towards where the cultivation area would be later, kind of going down sort of this way, I suppose. And this is just to give you an idea of what was underneath the trees, as the point is raised in the June 6th letter, that the cannabis plants in their young state were hiding amongst the shadows of the trees. And here is another photo from it, and you can see the cultivation area would be extending out kind of this way, and there's a excavator up there in the corner of the picture, and it just further goes to show that there's no young cannabis plants hiding underneath the trees in the shadows, and that the site still hadn't been fully established as late as July 12th, and that grading or other sort of earth moving was still occurring. Now to get into the aerial photos. On March 3rd, we can see the cleanup from the Butte Fire still going on. There was a home site on this parcel prior to the Butte Fire, it burnt down completely. All that was left was the fountain from the previous home there on the pad. The appellant contends that the leveling and grading of the cultivation site was done prior to the urgency ordinance, but the grading and clearing done for the Butte Fire is nowhere near commensurate with the 22,000 square foot cultivation site that was later put in place. Here we see on May 1st, the day the carport allegedly went up, the only amount of clearing that has been done on the parcel is still the Butte Fire cleanup, we can see the remnants of it there, and otherwise, no evidence of cultivation taking place. On May 31st, the cleanup is still the only visible grading and earth moving that is visible on the parcel. There's a Bobcat tractor down there next to the fountain on the home pad, and other than that, there is still no evidence that cultivation was taking place on the parcel, and that no grading or terrorsing has yet been done for the cultivation area. And here is a zoomed-in view of the May 31st image to clearly show the portions that is slightly up above the home site. You can see down there, the remnants of the cleanup, some erosion from the Butte Fire cleanup, and there is still no cultivation whatsoever taking place on the parcel, and no evidence that any terrorsene or grading has yet occurred. And the appellant, in the June 6th letter alleges that the cultivation site was established prior to May 10th, and that the square footage never changed, and it has always been the same square footage, and that appears to not be the case. Here we see June 9th, maybe a couple of trees have been cleared from the site, perhaps some grading has begun, it's hard to tell, but it's not as night and day where the disturbed earth is on the parcel from the Butte Fire cleanup, so it's possible that the grading began on or around June 9th, well after the May 10th deadline for earth movement for cultivation purposes. And other than that, there are still no signs that cultivation is taking place on the parcel. Then suddenly, on August 20th, there is roughly 14,000 square feet of canopy, the fencing, some irrigation is in place down here, the big water containers, you can see the soil amendment piles here, remnants of where the smart pots were being filled with the soil that was imported down there, and the site has been essentially fully established at this point. And if we're going to go to the water board, or the reports that were given to the water board, some grading and terrorsene was done for this site, and since the site doesn't appear to have existed on the parcel until at least August or after June, it stands to reason that the grading was done well after May 10th. So to summarize, this application was denied because the single piece of photographic evidence was found to be false or misleading information, and was therefore without satisfactory evidence that cultivation was occurring on the parcel prior to May 10th, and it was found that grading was done after the May 10th deadline.
Ms. James, would you like to come up?
Yes. Good morning. My name is Charnell James, I'm here with the applicant, Luigi de Dominico, he's here with us, and he'll be able to answer any questions briefly. I gave you a second copy of my June 2nd letter, I realized this morning that it had been included on the website that was published, so it was probably in your staff report, so it's probably a duplicate, but I had my staff print it anyway. Again, this is a case where I absolutely do not agree with Mr. Diamond at all. They, we have provided proof that there was plants within that carport, we have provided testimony that the carport came up and came down prior to that. There is nothing that can, that he's presented to show that that was false. So it's his desire to deny the permits, giving my applicant's position, and other issues that they've been having outside of this property, rather than a focus on what's truly, whether or not this is a false or misleading statement. My client is willing to testify and is here, will say that those plants were on that property underneath a temporary carport to do weathering, the pictures were taken, and there's nothing that he has presented counter to that. Second, so that, so grounds 1 and 2 for denial don't even apply in this case. The biggest picture, the biggest question here is whether or not there's grading on the property. Grading is defined under your code, and I'll read it specifically, it's in here, in the letter, but it says that grading is defined as 50 cubic yards of dirt and a slope change of more than one unit to five units. That's what's grading defined under your own code. The only movement that was done was soil that had been purchased and put into potting plants, into smart pots. By saying that that's grading would mean that if you bought 500 bags of potting soil to fill raised gardens to grow tomatoes in your yard, now you'd require that person to have to get a grading permit, and that that would be considered grading, and that's ludicrous. That's not what the code is intended for, and it's not, definitely not the definition of what grading is, either the state level or within your own code. Furthermore, the pictures that show the difference, yes, the fencing went up late, but there was no requirement that the fence was up by, by May 10th. In fact, all of the application requirements had to be completed by September 30th. They had to file the application, and grading had to be completed, completed by May 10th. And there is none, none of the things that he showed, he showed a close-up picture from an earlier period, but failed to show the entire property doing that, and that's for a specific purpose, is to push his own agenda to have this denied. There was no further grading after May 10th, and my clients can testify to that. There was filling of smart pots and moving smart pots. There, that's not grading.
Could you explain, then, the statement in your appeal letter, that I know you've, you've disclaimed that, "Any grading that was necessary began before May 10th, 2016, although it was completed after the May 10th, 2016 date." Can you explain how that statement got to be in that appeal letter?
I had way too many appeals that I was filing at the same time and had taken notes from a different case.
So what you're saying is that you put in facts from another case into the appeal letter for this case?
When I filed the original. If you'll notice, on my June 6th letter, I did correct that, and state that it was my mistake.
You said it was your mistake, but it was unclear exactly how that mistake had come out.
I had, I've dealt with seven or eight now appeals here in this county, and a number in a different counties as well, so it is not uncommon. I have, right now, pending 32 applications throughout the state, and I have about 14 And then I'll bring my, my permit holder up to answer any questions that he might have.
Luigi de Dominico?
I have a question, and you seem to be very clear as to the short time that this carport, or whatever you want to call the structure, was up. You know, you have specific dates as to when that was, was up, and yet, as I understand an email from you, you don't know exactly where it was. I don't know, I don't understand how you can be so sure about certain facts and not others.
I had told Miguel it was around those dates, I wasn't actually sure. I'm an absentee permit holder, so I have a manager that managed the property.
So you're not really sure what dates that it was up?
Well, it was up for a short time, it was unpermitted, so I didn't really want to leave it up. It was just to acclimate the plants.
And it was up for, what, was it two weeks or 13 days?
Within two weeks, under two weeks, for sure, 10, 13 days.
And what's the purpose of erecting?
So if you have a little clone, and you put it out in full sun, that's not used to full sun, it'll die. So the carport kind of gives it a little bit of shade, so you can acclimate it to the sun.
Bet you don't know exactly where that carport was, and whether it needed the shade.
It did, the plants needed the shade. The carport was to the right of the property, if you're facing the property from the street, it was on the right side.
Did we see that on one of these photos?
Could you do the, oh, go back. One more, go back. Can you show them on there?
So if you're standing on the street, it would...
Can we use the...
Yeah.
I mean, this was a year ago. It would have been right there in that section, right there.
In an email dated April 4th, 2017, to Miguel Contreras Ancona, you say, "Regarding the location, this would have either have been performed in the area we ended up using as the grow or above by where the old house was." I get from that that you don't know where this carport was.
Yeah, I spoke to the grow manager after that. When I spoke to Miguel, I, you know, I wasn't really sure. The grow pad's kind of steep, so it wouldn't have really been there.
On that topic, can I interject a question? I don't see any evidence of this building being located on that property, other than your statement. Do you have any, any documents, any receipts?
I don't.
Maybe a trailer company that moved it in place? Do you have any people who worked on it?
I can use the situation.
I mean, you personally, apparently, never even saw it, is that true?
I did see it. I did see it.
You did see it?
Yeah.
So you came here at some point?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Where did it come from? Where did the carport come from?
So my, my grow manager bought it, like a Craigslist kind of thing. I mean, I can ask him if there's some kind of bill of sale, I don't know if he's gonna have one.
Let me make sure we're talking about the same thing. Earlier, there was a photo of, I guess it's the photo, the one photo you submitted with the original application. Could you possibly... Could you possibly show that one? Is this what we're talking about when we say carport?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And how many plants are shown in that picture?
I'm not really sure. It's a lot, it's a lot.
Well, how many did you actually plant?
Um, I'd have to talk to my grow manager about that.
No idea.
Two thousand?
I'm asking you.
I would have to talk to him about it.
Well, it looks like they're small plants in flats. Is that how you bought them?
Yeah.
And what sizes are the, part of the flats?
They're just in little grow cubes at this point, so like little two-inch by two-inch cubes. I cut those clones, so, I mean, the tray can hold, you know, seventy.
How many trays were there?
Quite a bit. I don't know. I'd have to get back to you on that.
Well, today's the day. Yeah. Where's your, where's your grow manager? Somebody to testify.
Um, I mean, he's, he's at the property. I don't, he doesn't speak in-
I mean, conceivably, that could have all the plants needed for twenty-two thousand square feet. I don't know. I haven't done the math. I don't know what the, they look to be very small.
It, I mean, it, it does, it should. I know some of them died and I replenished them. Definitely did have quite a bit to fill those pots. I mean, those are very small right there. They don't take up a whole lot of room in their clones.
The story that this carport, which looks to be pretty substantial, was only there for two weeks, is a little hard to swallow, quite frankly. It looks like a pretty substantial building and it must have taken a fair amount of work to put it up.
We had a good amount of workers' work on it. I mean, it was unpermitted. I didn't really want to leave it up.
So can I, oh, go ahead.
I, I have some questions. By May fourteenth, according to the file, the plants that were in the carport were left out in full sunlight. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Were they left out on this parcel?
Yes, sir.
When you put them in full sunlight after you took them out of the carport, did you put them in pots at that time?
Little pots, yeah.
Little pots? How, how big are the-
Like one, one gallon pots, they're, they're small, they're about that size.
Where were they then? Because the carport was not at that point.
I wasn't there by May fourteenth, so that I'm not a hundred percent sure, to be honest.
Well, how, how large would those individual plants be at that point when you took them out of the carport?
They're gonna be small, because basically the carport was there just to acclimate them and they're still rooting. So we didn't, you know, when they're rooting, they don't really have a lot of growth up top, or you try to manage that growth so that they don't get too big, because your cube's only gonna hold, you know, X amount of water and moisture. So you don't really want them to be too big because they'll dry out quite a bit, so then you move them to a little bit bigger of a pot to hold some, some more water.
Okay, by, by May thirty-one, when that photo was taken, where were all these plants then? On this parcel?
Yes, I don't know. I'd have to ask.
And they've had, they've had over two more weeks to grow. How much would they grow in those two weeks?
Um, so once they acclimate to the sun, they start growing. They could be, you know, fifteen inches tall by then.
How wide?
Um, not, not very. We topped them so that they can grow wide and they hadn't probably been topped by then because they were in small pots, so we didn't want to have them kind of grow aggressively like that.
Can you, can you explain why none of these plants show up in any of these aerials? May thirty-one, June ninth, we don't see them.
I don't have a good answer for that. By May thirty-first, I don't, I don't really know where they were.
So by May, I'm sorry.
When, did you, did you wind up planting twenty-two thousand square feet of canopy?
Um, a little less. I think it was, I think Ben said it was twenty thousand square feet.
Or was originally measured around fourteen thousand square feet? It's now expanded out to the vault twenty-two.
Did his site plan show twenty-two thousand?
He did originally register for that much, yes.
And that was done inside it? There's no issue as to where the plants were ultimately placed?
No, that's in, that's commiserable, what he applied for.
How, how do we, how do we at the commission get from the garage photo? How do we extrapolate to, to find that what we see there became twenty-two thousand square feet eventually?
I don't have a good answer for that. I mean, I guess if, a person with experience with clones could say that there was a lot there, but I don't, I don't know how else to.
Okay. On, on this cultural resources inventory, what are the investigators looking for when they do one of these inventories?
What do you mean? For an environmental investigation?
Well, the cultural resources inventory investigation. What are they looking for? Indian artifacts?
Um, well, it depends on the type of report that's done, everything from, so a phase one, which is what the part of this report is, is they have to go to record books to see if there's a historic identification of Indian burial grounds or living sites within a location. Then they also go and look within the property itself to see if there's telltale signs of travel burial lands. They also do as part of a phase one, a full inventory of the property of flora and fauna that is located on the property. It has to list everything that they find, whether it's in pots or in the ground. I do know, having called and spoken to the investigator that did this, that he found there was cannabis, he just didn't know what the strain was because the plants were so small still. He had no idea if they were male or female, had no idea if they were hemp or indica. They just, he knew that they were cannabis that were located on the property. They just, when he did his description, he was addressing the specific final location and the plants were still being put into smart pots. So that's why he listed them on the inventory, but not in the report itself.
But he, do they actually, they come out and walk the property, do they?
They do. They come out and walk the property, take photos of the property, they do a full inventory, take sample of the, samples of the leaves, and then go back and, and match up samples to what's in there. It's a, it's a pretty extensive study. And they're biologists, they're not, they're not lawyers or things like that.
This survey was done July twelfth of twenty sixteen.
That is correct.
And at that time, according to the applicant, all these plants were still on that property?
They were still on the property, that is correct.
Were they in pots by that time or were they little?
They were in, still in the transfer stage, so they weren't in the final smart pots into the, well, part of them were, weren't they? They had, they had started to move on to, into the smart pots.
The problem I'm having is this report says, the cannabis, says no cannabis plants were present on the property, only the prepped pots. Doesn't say on the gardens, eventual garden site, it says on the property.
Yes.
And if you have twenty-two thousand square, what's gonna become twenty-two thousand square feet of cannabis in little pots somewhere on that property, I would think the investigator would have seen that and figured out it wasn't flowers or-
Right.
Tomatoes or something.
Yeah, he did list it in the list of inventory for plants on the property. That's what's in that, in that exhibit. I did ask for him to come here today. He was unable, he had a conflict and couldn't be here today, so.
Well, the, the, the document that lists cannabis as being on the property was the so-called biological site assessment.
That's part of the same inventory report. It's an appendix to that report.
Same, same people did it?
Exact same person did it.
I couldn't see any information as to how many plants were reflected.
They wouldn't list, yeah, they wouldn't list how many plants were on it. That wouldn't, that's not what they're there for. Their job is to identify the plants that are located on the property, not the quantity.
Yeah, I'm having some trouble squaring up the statement that no cannabis plants were present on the property. In one part of the report with this table, it shows cannabis or marijuana, I forget which, in another part of the report, there's-
It actually says both. It says cannabis and then it says marijuana is the common name. So if you'll, you'll, you actually have that exhibit, you have that exhibit list?
Yeah, we, we do have it.
And, and it lists on there, it says both the, both the legal name and then it also says marijuana directly across from it.
And then this, this cultural resources inventory says that, and this is July twelfth, says the current grow pad was under construction at the time of the survey. That's a quote.
That is correct. We're not denying that.
It's not, he's not, it's, it's not referring to pots and it's not referring to moving soil around. It's referring to a grow pad.
So a grow pad would be the location where the smart pots were going to be finally located. So some of the pots had been planted and moved and some of them had not. So, but moving smart plants is not grading.
But he's not saying you're moving pot plants. I mean, I don't want to argue with it, it says what it says, but when I read it, it says the current grow pad was under construction. And I take that to mean creating a pad, which to me means you're making something flatter.
No. There was nothing made flatter. There is, we, it is currently being grown all in smart pots. It has been grown in smart pots the entire time. There is all of the evidence that we have, including the pictures from the, the reports show that it has always been smart pots. There is nothing, there is no flat area that, ever. The, these are, where these things are located at, there is a slight incline, and so they're all in smart pots. That's the design for that.
So you're saying there was no need to grade?
There was no need to grade. Well, there was some grading, but that was from the Butte Fire, I believe, because you guys didn't do any actual grading, no. Yeah, there was the Butte Fire grading, but other than that, there was no other grading done on the property.
Because the terrain is gentle enough where you put the grow site, you didn't have to grade?
Yeah, in fact, if you could, because you put the overlay-
It's not really gentle. We just, we just put them in pots.
Yeah. So those are five-foot separations. Obviously, we're pretty high up, so you can see that, that, I would say that's probably less than a twelve, maybe, maybe fourteen percent. I'd have to do the math in quite, probably, probably less than that, but I was a physics major, but I can't do the math that fast in my head.
But if, if your, if your smart pot is not level and you go to water it, doesn't all the water go to the downhill side?
No, that's the benefit of the smart pots, the way they hold the soil in the water.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Well, what does it mean then with the, that it said that the pad was being, what was it constructed? What was the?
It says the current grow pad was under construction at the time of the survey.
They were moving smart pots, the fencing was being put up and stuff like that.
Moving smart pots means constructing a, a grow pad?
Yes. They'd have to move them into place. Smart pots are very heavy, so they have to be moved with machinery, so they would have been moved into place.
In your June letter, you say because there is no evidence to the contrary, my client's statements are taken as true since the application is signed under penalty of perjury.
That is correct.
Just which, which statements are you referring to and what is your legal basis for that statement?
Um, well, their application, they have to fill everything out. They have to be honest and truthful in their application. There has been nothing presented to counter what they say.
The photographic evidence?
There's nothing, yes, that's correct.
I mean, we, we have seen evidence that there was no growth on the property. And it, what you're saying is this, my client's statements, the statements you're referring to is saying, look, we have this picture inside this carport that has no distinctive location and he doesn't know where the location was. According to this one email, the statement that we have, today we hear that he was there and saw the carport, which is inconsistent with that statement. We've had many responses today that, oh, we'll have to ask the grow manager, I don't really have a, a good answer to that. I don't see statements that are, that we have to take as true, and I don't know the legal basis for your, your claim that since these statements were made under penalty of perjury, certain statements were made under penalty of perjury in the application, that they must be taken as true.
Well, I can tell you what a, a very good judge told me one time, that truth is one thing, as facts is another. When you have someone that testifies to something and they come before you and testify that that was there, they don't know the exact dates, but it was there and down, there was an unpermitted structure, there, that is testimony and facts unto itself and would be taken as such in a court of law.
It's nice that a judge told you that.
There has been no testimony at all, no evidence, Mr. Diamond was never at the property to see whether or not that was ever there. In fact, he has presented no one to testify against that.
Do you have an evidence code that backs up what the judge once told you?
Would you like me to, would you like me to pull up the evidence code? I would be happy to do that. Let me pull up one.
It's, it's a statement in your own letter, and so it'd be nice to know the legal basis for it.
Let me pull up the California evidence code. This will take me just a few minutes, so if you'll prefer with the other questions, I will be happy to give up my legal expertise on this.
I have a question, if I could get the figure three up on the screen.
Which figure is that?
June ninth. We have the actual colored picture for figure three and frankly, perhaps it's my eyesight, but I can see a little bit better detail on the photograph that's in front of me. But that, according to your testimony, that picture, June ninth, would be, I think you said, after the carport had been removed, correct?
Yes, sir.
So according to your theory, there should be roughly two thousand plus or minus plants sitting there on that dirt somewhere.
Well, they could have been moved from that dirt. I wasn't there on-
But they should be on that parcel.
Yes.
Where are they? I see absolutely nothing on there. The very next picture, figure four, shows, in August, August twentieth, shows all these plants. Admittedly, you could not see one plant from an aerial photo, but two thousand of them should be absolutely standing out, saluting, you would say, here I am. I, I just don't see it. And I've looked and looked and I have new eyeglasses, which should be working pretty well, and I just don't see it anywhere. I'm sorry.
Is any of the property, if you go back to the June ninth photo, was there fencing at any time here? You've already taken down the shed, correct?
Yes.
And you have two thousand, or you have plants on the property? We're not sure how many plants you have on the property. So you have them on the property somewhere, but there's not even a fenced in area we can look at to where you would have those plants, correct? I just wanted to back up just real quick here. I have the evidence code as well. It's a, other opinion testimony, it's under eight hundred. So if a witness is not testifying as an expert, which my client is not testifying as an expert, he's testifying as a person, testimony is in the form of opinion, is limited to opinion as is permitted by law, including rational basis perception of his witness and things that are helpful to clarify the understanding of the testimony. So it can be taken on his word.
Can be.
It can. It can be taken.
Yeah, what you were saying that must be taken is true. A little get me, excuse me.
Ben, do you have the application? Is that just strictly an outdoor application or is it an excuse?
It is for outdoor.
Better? Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just gonna go back to the cultural resources report. They did a intensive level pedestrian survey on the project area on July twelfth. At that, at that time, they're quoting, no cannabis plants were present on the property, only the prepared pots. Now, if between May third and May tenth, there were obviously hundreds, whatever that number is, baby cannabis plants, where did they go between May tenth, May thirteenth, when you took the shed down?
May 10th, May 13th, when you took the shed down, until July 12th? So when they did a walk of the property, they would have seen your baby plants that were in an inside area, which you're not permitted for, and they would have been outside and they would have been visible by cultural resources. Nowhere in this report do they document seeing those plants. They see smart pots. They see, um, "No cannabis plants were present on the property, only the prepped pots." Then it states, um, they, it conducted an intense, that's the wrong page. Let me get to the right page, sorry. And then they state, "There is a single growing area on a hilltop and hillside with some grading, removal of burnt trees and terracing, and the maximum canopy size, 22,000 square feet, as of July 12th, is being installed," meaning it wasn't there at the time of July 12th. So I'm really struggling with, you took the carport down, it was full of plants, according to the picture submitted with your application. When the report was done on July 12th, plants were not visible anywhere on the property and 22,000 square feet on July 12th was being installed, was not previously installed by May 10th. So if you could explain that, that would be great. And Mrs. James, I'm sorry, I feel as, as though Ben did present evidence showing us that there was no growing going on that property in those photos. We can see a, a extreme difference between June 9th and going into August, when there is growing, pots, fencing, everything is there on July, or August 20th. So there's some holes in this story for me that need to be filled in and I would love to hear it.
Well, first of all, the plants are obviously going to be more visible on August 20th. They're significantly larger. So that, there's a difference in the sizing.
You did not think on July 12th that somebody on foot wouldn't have seen that?
Okay, but except for he also listed as part of the inventory and I have explained to you, he was here on the 6th, he could not be here today. There, I tried everything to get him here today. He could not be here today. He would have testified, had he been here, that what he wrote had to do with the exact location of where the plants were going to end up, because the water board cares about that. That's what they care about. So it, he did list it in the inventory for, for flowers located on the parcel. His report was written for the water board, not for the planning department.
Okay, and then earlier you made a statement that, um, you didn't submit all the report and the other parts of the report stated that?
Yeah, they're listed in the exhibit. And your first, the first packet, the first staff report did not have the exhibit of the listing of all the floor and fauna. You guys have that now, but that, when we first came here, that was a problem. They didn't list the, all of the list of the, the plants that were found on the property within the study area. That's the parcel.
On July 31st, the smart pots are there?
Yes.
The plants are not. But you're telling me that the carport was full of plants on May 10th?
We're not saying that the plants were not there. That, that's not what we're saying. We're saying the plants were on the property. They were small. They inventoried them as being listed as product of plants found on the property. That's why it's in the exhibit.
Where?
The report in exhibit, the, what's the exhibit number?
It's appendix two.
It lists on there. Cannabis and then it puts the common name of marijuana. It's listed on there.
Where?
Checklist of plants detected in the study area.
Okay, so that is in this new thing you submitted?
That was in the report that I provided on June 6th and I believe that they added it as part of, they did the full report on the website for your staff report. So you should have had the full report. No, this is the exact same thing that I gave on June 6th. I just provided another comment.
Okay, all right. Okay, so in writing, he says, "No plants on the property on July 12th." On May 3rd, you show me lots of plants. I, I, and I understand you say he couldn't be here, but could you have not gotten a written statement from him to correct this, since you knew this was going to be an issue of contention today?
He has it. He had not signed it and gotten back to me. I had him here on the 6th. I thought that it wouldn't be a problem for him to get here until yesterday. But again, the report speaks for itself. The checklist of plants detected in the study area on the, the study area was the property. It clearly lists cannabis and the common name of marijuana.
It doesn't list how many plants or...
It's not required to list how many. It didn't list...
No, I understand, but you're, you're...
It didn't list how many big leaf maple plants were there either.
You are relying, you're relying upon that statement as, as that there's cannabis on the property. What we needed to, uh, your burden of proof was that, that there was sufficient cannabis to provide the canopy area that we were talking about. So I understand that, that you, you've, you've come up with something that says that there is cannabis on the property. But that isn't, that doesn't satisfy the burden of proof.
All right, thank you. We have nothing further.
Is there any public comment on this particular appeal?
Bill McManus. First of all, I'd like to compliment the, uh, commission for, uh, their patience. I'd like to know, is there a standard when you go through these hearings where false and misleading becomes perjury or fraud? And I see you struggle trying to maintain a middle ground in between the two. So many times, we, um, we see where, uh, statements like this bear, there, there is no penalty for misleading, uh, even though I think the real, the real charge here is, um, aggravated assault with misleading information, both premeditated and with malice aforethought. I don't know how you do it, but in any case, um, a couple of questions I had. Was there ever a permit for the, for the grading? Was there ever a permit for the carport? Uh, was there any compliance anywhere along the line, uh, that would indicate that this was going to be, uh, a somewhat compliant grow? And was there anything really proven, uh, based on, on the timelines, you know, both May 10th and for the, uh, uh, water department and all that? Seems like there's an awful lot of stuff that's required. None of it shows up here. Uh, you know, I don't have anything against this grow or anything like that. It just, it just seems to be one after another, that the most commonly checked box on, on the form is, uh, denial because of false and misleading information. I admire you for being able to take it time after time. I think I'd, uh, develop a habit of, once false and misleading information is given to this body, that considerations stop and you move on to something else that might, um, be a little bit more honest. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Miguel Contreras, um, here as a public member. I just wanted to clarify, just to put it on the record, the way that Calaveras County describes and defines grading, which is different than the way Ms. Charnell, uh, defined it. According to 15.05.040 of the Calaveras County Code, "Grading and grading activities refers to all earth-moving activities, including clearing, grading, excavation, fill placement, and stockpiling of earthen materials, including any combination thereof." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further public comment, I'm gonna close the public comments and go back to see if you had anything to rebut on that.
No.
Okay. Mrs. James, do you have any rebut? Thank you. Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Do you want to start?
Sure.
Okay.
Number one, I think it's clear on the record that there's no way that the commission can get from the carport photo showing plants to a situation where that's commensurate with 22,000 square feet. I think that's been admitted. There should be photo evidence of plants on the, on the ground, if they were on the ground, by July 12th. It should show up and it doesn't. And there's no explanation as to why it's, why it doesn't. The cultural resources inventory says there were no marijuana plants, cannabis plants on the property and they looked at the entire property. So there's just too much in this file that either doesn't prove or affirmatively disproves that there was not cultivation on this property commensurate with the area proposed. On the grading, we do have evidence that says they were constructing a grow pad as of July 12th, not moving pots, constructing a grow pad. And we know there was some grading and terracing because the site management plan tells us that. So it's not a situation where no grading was either done or necessary. There was some done. And so I'm, I'm prepared to affirm the planning director's denial on all the ground stated.
I agree with Kelly. And I agree with what Joe said earlier. I'm having an issue with these photos.
I have an issue with the photos that this August 20th one and then the one dated, uh, June 9th, you can't find the plants anywhere. I can't see them. I can't see them anywhere, where they would be moved, where they're, and that's a significant amount of plants. So I agree with Kelly. We need to deny it.
I agree also, although I, I suspect the picture, the one picture of the so-called carport, it may actually have had 2,000 plants in there. There were quite a few. All the more reason why figure three, the June 9th thing, doesn't show 2,000 plants. So it's a substantial green spot that should be easy to spot with that June 9th photo. It's not there. There's absolutely no evidence that you actually had them on that site, so I, I can only conclude that the carport or shed or whatever it is was somewhere else and they were not on that site.
I have nothing to add with the other commissioners have said.
I don't either, so it, would you like to read the recommendation?
Yes, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2017-043, thus denying 2016-02, 802, appeal, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016-802.
Thank you. And a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by a vote.
Just for the record, this action is final unless appealed to the board of supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Okay, why don't we take a 10-minute break now and then we'll come back and continue with item number E2. We will start with E2, the appeal by, um, 2016-520, and Miguel, you're gonna present that?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. We're gonna take a two-minute break. Okay, sorry about that. We're back in order here. Okay, Miguel.
All right, so good morning to the planning commission. This is Miguel, planning department. I'm here to present, uh, appeal 2016-520, which is a denial of, uh, a medical cannabis cultivation registration.
Miguel, you're gonna need to speak up a little bit more distinctly.
All right, how's this?
No.
More? All right.
Yell at us, please.
All right, so the cultivation site is located at 6360 the, uh, De Los Angeles Road in, uh, Camp Osoco. Essentially, what happened is during a code compliance inspection conducted on May 25th, code compliance noted that the cultivation site was over canopy. Uh, the cultivation site was registered for, um, 1,250, uh, square feet. In reality, um, what they were cultivating was close to 8,000 square feet. Code compliance instructed the appellant to, to, uh, remove all the cannabis pursuant to county code 17.95.165J and to, uh, contact the planning department if, for whatever reason, they needed instruction or, or, you know, how to, how to go about this process. On May 26th, the appellant submitted, uh, photographs to code compliance and, uh, one of the photographs depicted cannabis being loaded up on a truck. Code compliance asked the appellant, uh, what happened to this cannabis, to which the appellant responded that all the plants that were over canopy were moved to Sacramento. This is a violation of 17.95.165. J, which is the reason for denial. And, um, that's it for me. If you have any questions?
Um, I do.
Yes.
So one of the issues was, it's not as an issue, it's just clarification, is the appellant, is John Broadway?
John Broadway is the person that submitted the appeal letters and signed the appeal letter to register and is Hoy Pham.
Okay, and is John on the application?
John is a member of the corporation that, uh, that's being registered.
Okay, so did the corporation apply for the application or did Hi Pham do that individually?
Pham did individually.
Does John have a right to appeal this?
I would, uh, I would hope that there is, if we're gonna have John Broadway appealing, that there, that the planning department has, um, has some chain of authority, some written, um, you know, some sort of written permission from the appellant that Mr. Broadway actually does represent him.
Okay.
I, you know, that would be ideal, because how do we know that Mr. Broadway is, um, is actually authorized to speak for Mr. Pham?
The planning, uh, department doesn't have a formal letter of, that says that. But like I said, however, um, the appellant or, uh, Mr. Broadway is part of the corporation, which is in the board resolution that was submitted to the planning department. And, uh, also I believe code compliance has had interactions with, uh, Pham that has designated Mr. Broadway as an agent of sort for Mr. Pham.
I, I guess I would ask Mr. Turner to try to clarify this, or the situation, um, for your department. Um, do we, because it sounds like we don't have a corporate applicant. So just being part of the corporation might not necessarily authorize that person to speak for an individual, um, for an individual applicant. I, so I would ask Mr. Turner to try to clarify or lead, to lead some sort of certainty here.
Sure. Um, I, when I, when I looked at this, I thought it was simply a mistake. The appellant should be Huey Pham, uh, Hoy Pham, or however you, sorry about the pronunciation, but, um, in the appeal letter, Mr. Broadway identifies himself as an agent. And so whether or not there needs to be, um, an authority to do that, I don't know. One does not need to be a lawyer to represent the appellant here in this hearing. Uh, so, uh, he claims to be, um, agent of the appellant.
But do we have anything in writing from the, from Mr. Pham to document this? That would be my concern.
Uh, no, I have nothing in writing. He actually disclaimed that he was.
Okay, so I'm gonna make an executive decision here with all of you, hopefully. I think that we need to get something in the file on record that states he has permission to represent before we have this hearing. Is it possible to continue this and wait for something in writing? I think that would be the safe route to take.
Could we ask Mr. Broadway if perhaps he has something?
Yes, we can ask him. Yes, he may have something in writing.
Uh, no, nothing in writing, sir.
Okay. What is your opinion? I mean, both of you, what do you think?
Um, I, I, I don't, in the, uh, in our code here, it doesn't say anything about, that they happen to be a lawyer. And when we have a lawyer, we don't ask them for authentication that they're a lawyer. They just say they're a lawyer and they're representing somebody and there's no one requiring, you don't, you don't have to be a lawyer to represent someone as an agent for the planning.
So you're okay with moving forward with this? You feel comfortable?
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with it and it could be, you know.
The appeal letter says, "I, John Broadway, am submitting this appeal on behalf of Juan Pham, who, and Hui Pham." I, I would agree with Mr. Turner that, um, we don't have necessarily requirement. I think it's good practice and we certainly will be doing that in the future, uh, to have something in writing when someone is, you know, purporting to be a representative of a, an applicant or an appellant. or an appellant. But, again, we don't typically require that for an attorney who says that they represent someone. I don't know that we would necessarily need to hold off on this hearing today, I would rather hold the hearing today and continue on with the, the process than to delay it.
I have a question on that, as, do we know that Mr. Pham, or I guess there were two different Phams involved, has actual notice of this?
Yes, we, we noticed the appellant as, and the registrant, as well as the property owner on all items.
So, that both, that there has been an appeal and that it's been heard today, etc.
Yes.
So if he had an objection, Mr. Broadway's representation, he has every chance to?
We certainly would have heard if Mr. Broadway did not represent him.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, the, Mr. Broadway is a signatory on the corporate entity, they wanted to have, become the applicant in this case. He's, he's a director of Carrying Aid Collective. This, this entity never became the applicant, in order for that to have happened, Mr., yeah, well, it probably couldn't have happened, actually, in these circumstances. But evidently, they're in business together, and they're both directors of the Carrying Aid Collective. Or whatever that's called.
Since Miguel is done with his presentation, if you'd like to give yours, now would be the time, don't you think?
Is Miguel done?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay.
Good morning. This all started when the urgency ordinance passed, and we realized that we needed to start getting everything according to the county code. Our first problem that we encountered was zoning, which was mentioned in there. Our property was zoned as basically a quarry, as M2 industrial, which prevented us from doing our proper applications. When I contacted the county personally, probably over a year ago, they advised that if we're going to try to change our zoning, good luck, because it would probably happen after everything else in the county happens as far as the general plan overhaul, and that we probably wouldn't be able to get zoning changed anytime soon. We advised with a lawyer on what would be the best course of action, and they said that we should probably submit a letter of intent to show what we would like to do, and then work with the county to get permissions and zoning changed and everything else. Up until this point, we've done everything as well as we can to keep everything in compliance, except for the canopy space going over, that was a mistake that I can't deny. And we've, we've taken great steps to try to set the bar and set an example of what we think this county would like to see in a commercial cannabis cultivation. And it's a shame that we've put a lot of work in, and it looks like we're just going to get snagged on a stipulation. So, for Miguel's statement about the plants being removed instead of destroyed, that's absolutely correct, I can't deny that at all. That was our fault, we read into the FAQ incorrectly, and regret that greatly right now. But that's a small portion, I think, of what's going on. We're doing a lot of work, and basically, we, we got hung up with zoning, where we couldn't apply for mixed-use lighting and the greenhouse under our current zoning, which was industrial. We've got that changed since, and our letters of intent are still in. We would like to move forward with getting everything set up correctly, if, if everyone is okay with that. And we would like to continue cultivation and continue setting a good standard for the county.
So, just a, a matter of, nobody read the ordinance about the requirements for destroying the plant?
Well, for the destruction, we did not get any clear answer on that.
No, I mean, the ordinance, you have a clear statement in the ordinance, nobody in your
Board of Director? Nobody, nobody had read that, nobody had read that at that time. The 24-hour period with the, all the underlining under it on the, on the corrections list had us pretty worried and frazzled, so we were kind of rushing to figure out what we were going to do with everything. It was just, you know, a very hectic time to try and get everything where it needed to be and back into compliance. I wanted to get pictures and evidence to her as quickly as possible, showing that we were doing what we were supposed to, which was the pictures I sent of the empty greenhouse and everything getting moved out. If we had simply been informed right then and there, "No, you have to destroy these," then that's what would have taken place, I asked her.
You were informed through the ordinance?
Well, the ordinance was there, yeah, but the person that I was speaking to in person just said, "removed," and I said, "Well, what if I'm cutting them down and I'm not done in 24 hours?" And she said, "Just make sure they're removed in 24 hours." If she just said, "Cut them all down and burn them," then that's what I would have done.
What eventually happened to the plants?
Uh, they moved to another site in Sacramento, which is not related to us, and those plants have since been harvested.
How, how did you come to cultivate 8,000 square feet when you were applying for 1,200?
Two weeks before, we had another inspector out to do the building inspection for the permit on the greenhouse. We had it empty at that time, and he brought up a very good point that, you know, this might be your only chance to recoup any investment on this, you should probably move forward instead of standing still for as long as we'd been standing still for. I'm not the only member of the group, obviously, so I put my vote in, and everybody else put their vote in. The vote passed that we should fill the greenhouse and move forward, and that's how it got filled.
Well, when did you plant the 8,000 square feet?
Oh, that, well, when did we originally plant it, or when did we move it out to the greenhouse?
When did you originally plant them?
Oh, shoot, that would be, let me see. At least a month, if not two, before it moved out to the greenhouse, it would have been in our indoor facility, the one that was on the original permit. And then we decided, well, we can finish it in the indoor facility and have a, a small recuperation, or we can move into the facility we've been waiting to use and have a larger recuperation of funds and move on to another cycle sooner. So that was the vote, the decision that was made by the group.
When you, when did you submit your application, June 30?
Uh, I believe it came in, we got ours in like a day or two before the deadline.
But at that point, you had the 8,000 square feet?
Uh, we had the building constructed, but we were not using it.
Okay, so, so at the time you submitted the application, did you have any plants in inventory?
Uh, we did on the property, but not in the greenhouse.
Okay.
Because we, we had the indoor going.
And what I'm trying to figure out is, when code compliance came out, there were 8,000 square feet, correct?
Uh, correct, when code compliance for cannabis came.
And at that time, you'd only applied for 1,200, correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay. What explanation is there for not removing the other 6,800 by the time code compliance came around on whatever date it was?
Uh, well, when the original code officer came out for the building code, we had everything empty, which he can attest to. And we had just been waiting and waiting and waiting, people in the group had lost patience, and not being able to recoup funds on something that we had, you know, started this project a long time ago. And the decision was made to move forward with stage two, which was basically what we were waiting for the county to come give us approval to begin. And that's why everything moved in there. And when we were, when she came, we didn't have a, a big heads-up on it, we didn't have a prior knowledge of when she was going to come, we just knew that she was going to come soon. And we decided that she's either going to tell us to cut it all down, move it, or that it's okay. And I knew it's okay was very, very, very unlikely, but we knew it was going to be a bridge we'd have to cross at that point.
When, okay. Do I understand correctly that you did not read the urgency ordinance at all before code compliance arrived?
Um, I can say that I didn't read it page to page, I didn't read it front to back.
Okay. The notice of correction says, and this is May 25th of this year, says, "Plants must be removed according to county ordinance," which you understood meant the urgency ordinance?
Correct.
But nobody went and read the urgency ordinance on your side?
Not in great detail at that time, no. That was because we had the 24-hour window, which was already less than 24 hours by this point, and we just needed to move forward with the plans as quickly as possible. Destroying that number of plants was probably possible if we had brought in a lot of help at that time, but it seemed like to us, moving them off the site was a lot faster solution, and then we could provide evidence that we had cleared the site for them.
Well, you could have moved them off the plants, off the premises, and then destroyed them, couldn't you?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
But that's not what happened?
No. Uh, once they were moved off the premises, they were pretty much out of our possession, and so for us to come in after that and destroy them would have been a little bit of, you know, you can't give someone something and then tell them that they have to cut it all down. So we basically gave it to another party.
Give it to them or sell it to them?
Give. No financial or no cash transaction or anything like that.
Did these, the other party transport the plants?
No, we did.
Okay, so you could have transported them to someplace and just burned them up, couldn't you?
Shoot, I mean, now we're thinking, we could have just transported them to the dump if we wouldn't have been so paranoid about the dump calling the DEA on us. Yes, that's correct.
So when was the decision made to grow 8,000?
Oh, probably two, three days after the original code compliance came up for the building permit.
Now, I don't understand, I mean, you put in an application for 1,200 square feet?
Oh, do you mean, when did we decide we wanted to fill a greenhouse as well, or when did we decide?
When did you decide that you were, despite what the ordinance said and what you said in your application, you were going to grow 8,000 square feet?
We decided that probably two or three days after the permit officer came out to inspect the building, then he reminded us that, you know, this is probably all going to go south and get banned soon, you should just try and do something, which I know isn't, he's not a, he's not related to cannabis at all, it just kind of sparked a flame in a lot of people's minds that, you know, we put a lot of money into this building and we're not getting anything out of it, maybe we should just try to get something out of it.
Something out of it, something out of it, you mean, four times what the, what the...
What was allowed, correct?
What was allowed. And that's, so, it should not have come as a great surprise to you when somebody came out and said, "You have four times what's allowed."
Wasn't a surprise, no.
And then you were instructed to, to remove them pursuant to the ordinance, and nobody looked at the ordinance. It's hard, hard to feel sympathy for somebody who was trying to grow four times as much as...
Uh, I can definitely understand that, the, the four times as much would technically have been five times as much if we had moved into the full phase two. But, you know, we were just waiting for the word that we could do it before we did it.
You were trying to get out of it, what you could.
And, you know, it came down to the wire, and we said, you know, "We don't know when, when, when the officer is going to show up, so we have to try and get something out of this." Everyone, oh, I mean, that's not an excuse, I won't say anything like that, so.
Okay.
Removed could have easily been noted as destroyed, and that would have led to a much clearer understanding if it would have been written, "Plants must be destroyed," plants would have been destroyed. I think removed is a bit ambiguous, and I think that could have been changed.
Don't you think the ordinance itself is very...
The ordinance is not ambiguous, no, you are correct.
Okay, do you have anything further you want to add? I have nothing to say, I mean, I've pretty much said it all.
Yeah, I mean, this is just with the situation we came into, I know that it's, you know, we're all kind of trying to figure this out. With the emergency ordinance and now the proposed ban, and the comments on the ban, I think everyone would just like to see, you know, figure out where the county's headed and, and get there in a, in a compliant and, you know, a beneficial manner to both parties.
Unfortunately, with, I'm hearing it and seeing it, it wasn't compliant, so I think there's, I can't, I'm in a... Uh, you want to hear from me? There we go, how's that? Anyway, if you have nothing further to say, I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anybody in the public have any comment? No? Okay, do you have anything to rebut?
No.
Do you have any rebut? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing and bring it back to the commission, you want to...
I, I want to just pipe in on one, one point. Mr. Broadway has stated that, you know, he was waiting for county approval to move forward, but the county approval would have been the adoption of a new ordinance that would allow him to grow more than what he had applied for. I think he did that knowingly, knowing it was in violation of the code, even though he said that they were, I didn't quite use those words, but like a model grower, that they were trying to abide by all the rules and regulations. Well, they clearly weren't. And, you know, if, if he had destroyed the plants as the code required, then we probably would have found that he was in compliance. They had 24 hours to do so, but he chose not to, and, you know, that was a decision they made. I think this is pretty much a cut and dry denial on our part. Thank you.
I do think that the, uh, I understood, waiting for the county to move forward, he was talking about getting the permit for the greenhouse. That doesn't affect anything else he usually said, but I, I didn't get that he, they were waiting for the county to approve a much greater growth area.
Okay, you have anything to say?
I think the resolution adequately covers it.
I'm good.
No more comments?
Same thing.
Okay, can we have you read the recommendation, please?
So, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017-061, thus denying 2016-5-520 appeal, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016-520.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five vote. Thank you.
And this item is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
We will move on to E3, 2016-970. Miguel, are you also presenting this one?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a teeny tiny favor. You're mumbling today.
I'm sorry.
I want you to speak clearer, please. I'm having a tough time.
Ready?
Ready.
Alright. So, this is Miguel Contreras with the Planning Department, I'm here to present Appeal 2016-970, is, which is a denial by the planning director for a commercial cannabis cultivation site. So essentially, what happened is that, well, first off, this site is located at 198901 Rose Court, Mount Ranch. So, what happened is that during a site inspection on May 9th, 2017, code compliance identified grading with, without a county permit. They also noted that this grading looked to be for cultivation purposes. On May 24th, a representative for the appellant, Ms. Safarova, emailed a photo to code compliance depicting pots on the newly graded terraces. And here are some quick pictures, so you can see what the grading looked like during code compliance inspection.
What day was that?
May 9th, 2017. And this is the picture that the agent for the appellant submitted, and we could clearly see the pots on the newly graded terraces. Code compliance gave instruction to the appellant to, for one, get a grading permit, and secondly, to contact the Planning Department regarding this newly graded, this newly graded area. The appellant never contacted the Planning Department regarding this until May 25th. On that day, I personally spoke with Ms. Safarova. I, she identified herself as an agent for Mr. Cerro Byan? Cer, I'm sorry, Cerro Byan. Uh, on this day, I also asked Ms. Safarova what, what the purpose of this grading was. She told me that this, the purpose for this grading was just simply to remove vegetation that was left on the parcel, and that it was insignificant enough to not even constitute grading. not even constitute grading. Uh, I, I told her that I had, uh, photos from code compliance that showed a significant amount of grading and that this was way more than simple, simple vegetation removal. Um, to this, she stated that, um, yeah, perhaps it is excessive, you know, but it wasn't done for the purposes of cultivation. I also informed her that I did have in my possession a picture that showed pots on the newly graded terraces. And, um, after this, she, she said that, yeah, the pots were placed there, but under code compliance's instruction to get out of the seventy-five foot setback. I informed her that, uh, this was a violation of seventeen point nine five, point one six five, point nine, point seven, which does not allow any grading after the May tenth, two thousand sixteen deadline for the purposes of cultivation whatsoever. And, yeah, I informed her that, uh, she should expect a denial letter, or that the appellant should expect a denial letter. And, uh, that's pretty much my presentation, if you have any questions.
There's the mention of the seventy-five foot setback. Uh, do we have a site plan here? Do we have an idea of what, uh, if there's any relevance to that?
So this is the site plan that was provided to the planning department. As you could see, the, the fence and the pots at, the very least on the site plan look extremely close to the, to the cultivat, or to the property lines. This is, uh, September ninth, uh, two thousand sixteen. As you can see, the, the parcel lines, the, or the cultivation area intersects the parcel lines. Of course, these parcel lines are not true, but, uh, you can kinda make out the property lines on the northern, northern boundary and the west or eastern boundary, how these, this property line should be shifted, which makes the, the cultivation area right on the property line.
So earlier you stated they couldn't move based on that they were next to the property?
They couldn't move according to seventeen point nine five, point one six five, point nine, point seven, which states that for this to happen, for a proportional adjustment to take place, you have to inform the planning department at the time of submittal, which did not happen. It's not even in their, in their site plan that they planned to move this to meet the setback requirement.
And where it ended up is, is in violation of the seventy-five foot setback?
Uh, the way I look at it, um, yes, it would be.
Had they contacted the planning department, as was suggested by code compliance, what would the planning department's, uh, standard practice have been?
I would, uh, inform the appellant that this was not allowed and to expect a denial letter, you know, but I would have liked to have an explanation of what was going on. And secondly, to verify that, in fact, they did not submit with their application, you know, and intend to do a proportional adjustment to meet the seventy-five foot, uh, setback requirement. So that was the whole purpose of code compliance, telling them to contact the planning department.
If I could elaborate on that a little bit more, um, in order for someone to do a proportional adjustment, they needed to show on their site plan when they registered that their existing cultivation area was within the seventy-five foot setback, how much of that was and where they were proposing to relocate it. They also were required to have a grading permit to do that. Um, that says in section one sixty-five N. Seven, and it reads, "A resident seeking to conduct grading for this purpose, the relocation, um, beyond May tenth, two thousand sixteen, must provide the planning department with a, with a copy of a current grading permit for this proportional adjustment at the time of submitting his or her application for registration. No additional grading or earth moving for the purpose of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May tenth, two thousand sixteen." So if they had come in after the fact that, "Oh, we just realized we're within the seventy-five foot setback," the only thing that we would allow after that point would be, you just have to remove that portion of it. You can't, you, you missed your opportunity to say, "I'm gonna move it" because you didn't submit that with your application. Thank you.
And just real quick on the screen is, uh, what it looks like as of June fourteen, two thousand seventeen. You can see the, the terraces with the pots on the terraces, and that's how it used to look like September ninth, two thousand sixteen. So you can see the movement.
Okay, are you completed?
I'm completed.
Would you like to come up with a statement?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Nerea Safarova, uh, short for Nury, it's easier that way. Um, I'm a little bit nervous, so I'm gonna be reading a lot, hopefully I don't stumble too much. Um, I'm the vice president of choices for you here on behalf of Mr. Greg Sirobian and Mr. Jim Moore, who is the property owner. Mr. Moore is not able to attend this hearing today because he's bedridden due to his bone cancer illness. He is in support of this appeal and is more than willing to submit a statement if that is required further. Uh, Mr. Sirobian is here in the audience and is able to answer questions. Um, a little bit about me, I grew up in Pioneer Calaveras area and I finished high school here, so I'm very familiar with the values of this county and the importance of the environmental use. I have enormous respect for the county and their work and I thank you for this opportunity to hear me today. And I will make this relatively short, so we don't get stuck here for, um, for a long time. Our property is located in a non-classified zone, all of our cult, uh, all of our neighbors are cultivators, we haven't had any issues with the neighbors. Um, I would like to point out, without citing the urgency ordinance that describes no grading after May tenth, I think we're pretty familiar with it by now and, um, it has been an ongoing issue for many properties. While we did grade after tenth, uh, May tenth, two thousand sixteen deadline, there are mitigating circumstances which should prevent our violation of the U.O. chapter seventeen point nine five from being a basis for denial. In a series of co, correspondence with code compliance, Mr. Sirobian and I reasonably relied on representation from the county staff that despite the violation of the statutes, our site could be brought into compliance within the chapter by making corrections within the timeframe specified by the enforcing officer, Mr. Thomas Watts. On May tenth, two thousand seventeen, Mr. Watts sent Mr. Sirobian an email, there was no written correspondence, I would like to note that, which stated the following, "Following the inspection of your commercial cannabis site on the May ninth, two thousand seventeen, a number of corrections have been identified which need to be completed in order for the site to come into compliance with the urgency ordinance." Mr. Watts then proceeded to list a number of corrections, including the requirement of a grading permit from Public Works. On or about May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, Mr. Sirobian and I went to planning and explained the situation. We were directed to go to Public Works and get the paperwork for grading. We went over to Public Works and were given a blank application for grading and were advised to hire a local civil engineer who could send a letter of engagement because the grading permit process was backed up six to eight weeks. Please note that we did not, we did inform Public Works of the fact that this property is cannabis-related. On or about May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, I personally began searching for a civil engineer and I found Cal State Engineering. They had excellent reviews and I initiated contact with their office. When I spoke with Cal State Engineering, they informed me that they indeed remedied a lot of grading issues in this county, specifically cannabis-related. Mr. Sirobian immediately signed a contract with Cal State Engineering and we paid an initial retainer to begin the work. On May sixteen, two thousand seventeen, I emailed Mr. Watts informing him of the corrections that we had made, including clarifying whether or not we still need a grading permit. The following date...
Can I, what was that date on that last email?
May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. Some of the correspondence was via telephone, I just want to note that as well.
Well, we're paused here. Now, on the, the email from code compliance, in, in bold lettering, it says, "Speak to the planning department regarding the grading that has been recently carried out on the property."
Correct.
Now, you're saying that you did go to speak to...
We went to the planning department. I spoke with a female, I do not recall the name, and they had sent me over to Public Works for a grading permit.
You were not told, uh, that there's no way to cure this?
Not at that time. The only reliance I had was on the email from Mr. Watts stating that we are able to come into compliance. By receiving a grading permit.
I don't see it.
Does anyone have a May fifteenth email, I don't see it in the packet?
I don't see it.
We have one of May seventeenth, but I can't find one of May sixteenth.
Okay, I, I apologize, this is, uh, an email, May seventeenth at four forty-three P. M. to Mr. Watts.
All right, now I find it.
Administrative error.
And at, at one point, code compliance gave you a copy, I, I know you can't read it from here, uh...
Yes, I see it, yes, yes. We have that, we had that in the email as an attachment, PDF attachment.
And that it does specifically say that correcting the violations listed above does not guarantee that your application will be approved. Did you ask the planning department, when you went to the planning department, about that statement?
I had asked, "Should we continue correcting all of the issues?" The response was yes.
From the planning department?
Correct.
But you don't know who that...
I wish I wrote down the names at that time, but I did not think that I would have to.
I, I'd like for you to continue with your presentation, please.
Thank you, thank you. The following day, so May eighteenth, um, in response, Mr. Watts emailed me to, uh, that Public Works may very well consider the work done on the property to be grading and it would require a permit, without clarifying that grading was a non-correctable offense. On that same day, I sent an email to Mr. Watts updating him on the corrections being made, specifically that we need, we will be submitting a letter of engagement from Cal State Engineering. And, uh, we will be addressing the grading issue and make sure that we don't have any significant erosion issues, and if we do, we will be correcting those. On May eighteen, two thousand seventeen, when Mr. Watts asked if I had spoken to planning about the grading, I informed him that I have and the planning had directed me to Public Works to obtain a grading permit, whom already advised me to get a civil engineer and get grading permits through them. I also informed Mr. Watts that I was going to see the civil engineers this afternoon for them to view the property and determine all the, the work that needs to be done on the property in order to clean it up. On May nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, I emailed Mr. Watts a letter of engagement from Cal State Engineering and informed him that they will be submitting copies of that letter to Public Works, Planning Department, and Code Compliance. I called each department the same day to confirm the receipt of that letter, which all three departments responded with, "We have received it and we're putting that in your file." Now, I'm not sure if it's three different files or one, but I wanted to make sure every department at this point has the same correspondence. Uh, I, I, from multiple conversations with, uh, Public Works and Planning, I have mentioned that I'm hiring Cal State engineer and the county, they, they had stated that the county is very familiar with, with this engineering company, therefore I was very confident in hiring them to do the work. On May twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, Mr. Watts asked me if I had spoken to the planning department and I responded that same day that I had spoken to Miguel and Scott a few times. I would like to point out that neither Miguel nor Scott during any of these conversations had clearly advised me that the grading issue was non-correctable offense. Mr. Watts then wrote back requesting to be kept updated with the grading permit, uh, and the fence that needed to be installed at that time, which were in progress. On May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, I did just that by informing Mr. Watts that I was waiting on the engineers to update me on their progress. On May twenty-sixth, the enforcement agent informed me that he had sent the information to the, uh, of the site to the planning for review due to grading issues. A few day, days later, Mr. Sirobian receives a letter dated May twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, from the planning department, informing him that his application for cannabis cultivation has been denied because of grading performed after May tenth, two thousand sixteen. We received this letter well after we had taken all steps to make corrections on the property, including removing trailer from the property, removing extension cords and wiring that were not up to code and making sure that the remaining wiring was up to code, installing fencing around the entire five-acre property, displaying our permit and address marker as requested, putting locks on all entrances, having a survey done of the property, and hiring Cal State engineer. And we all, uh, we have done all of this work within the timeframe we were given with an extension of two days. In total, we spent a significant amount of money, I don't have paperwork in front of me, but, um, in order for us to come into compliance, because we reasonably believe that we could come into compliance with the code based on directions we received from the county staff. While we plan on appealing this issue, we still sought to remain in compliance with the county ordinances by immediately submitting proof that we did not currently have any plants on the property. And the only plants that we all ever cultivated was on the upper terrace, um, I will elaborate on that if that's needed. On June fifth, two thousand seventeen, I met with Jeff Moreland from Cal State to walk the site and discuss rectifying grading and potential erosion issues. In addition, after engaging Cal, Cal State and working with them, I learned about Ms. Sarah Hudson's case. And, uh, I, we've determined that the, it, it was a lot more complex than ours and her appeal was considered and approved, and it is clear that we're dealing with a similar issue here and we're professionals that want to comply and fix and learn from our mistakes. So we set a good example for everybody else that's coming into our county. I will kindly ask the county to consider our case for approval. Our dealings with the county, specifically Planning Department, code compliance and Public Works, led us to reasonably believe that the grading issue was correctable. People from multiple departments knew throughout our communications that the grading had been, had taken place and not one person informed me or Mr. Sirobian that the grading issue was non-correctable offense. In fact, they continued to instruct me how to fix the issue by directing me to hire a local civil engineer, giving me a blank application and asking if I had spoken to planning department. Based on these actions, Mr. Sirobian not only corrected the other issues pointed out by Mr. Watts, costing thousands of dollars, but we also hired a local civil engineer. Thus, it would be unfair and unjust to deny our permit after the good faith effort we had already put in, put into our property based on our reliance, reliance on the county's directions. I have been in constant communication with everyone at the county attempting to ensure that I follow everybody's directions that were given to me by the county staff. Please also note that we did not have a final inspection as of today. I realize that there are policies in place and that we're there for, and they're there for a reason, and we respect that by exhausting all of our efforts and trying to do everything we can to right a wrong. But this process is here also in place for a reason. It is to be the body of fair judgment where a shrewd panel like yourselves can evaluate beyond the black and white policies, make an astute decision for approval based on the validity of the compensating factors I have detailed and deem as an acceptable risk. If this process is meant to serve any purpose, it would be to weed out blatant violators with no intentions to ever operate within compliance and to uncover reasons for making exceptions and anomalies such as ourselves. We do care about our community and I want to get, I, I want to get it right, we want to get it right and operate the right way. I believe we're the group and ask for the opportunity to prove that it is possible. While I do understand that we may or may not get denied today, Mr. Moore is highly respectable for us, so whether we have to get the grading issues addressed, we will do that. We will clean up the property and we will, uh, continue with our lives. Thank you.
Uh, I do have a question. The, I mean, the grading itself, at some point, you decided you could go ahead and do the grading without a permit and, as we've seen in the, in the pictures from code compliance, it was a, I use your term, it was a rather brazen violation of the, of the ordinance. So it seems to me the only question is whether or not that is excused by the fact that if you were indeed led on by the county... is excused by the fact that if you were indeed led on by the county to, to do all this remedial work. And so that's, that's really the question. But we do have a, a very serious violation of the ordinance here.
Absolutely. Yes. I don't want to get into too many details, but I will elaborate on what happened, so you have a better picture what happened on our end. Back in two thousand sixteen, in the beginning, we met with Mr. Moore, and he had stated that his area was completely burned down. He needed assistance with financially. So we had stated that we will go ahead and help him. We will pay the lease, and he will allow us to cultivate on his property. Now, that was between February and March two thousand sixteen. I had taken all the steps to prepare everything. I did the budget analysis. I looked at the property together with Mr. Serobian. There was a lot of trees that were cut down by the county and never cleaned up. Immediately after that, I had been diagnosed with something where I had to undergo medical treatments for quite a significant amount of time. So I engaged in a lawyer in Sacramento to oversee this entire process. They were supposed to brief us on their urgency ordinance. When they came out, we did not receive anything like that. So, yes, it is our fault for not following up. It is our fault for not getting a clear picture of what the ordinance says, what the grading defines, like Miguel said today. And that is completely my fault. I should have, I should have been there, but I couldn't. And from now on, I'm going to triple-check everybody's work if I have to.
Was the original grow on both sides of the property line?
The original grows was on upper terrace. Let me clarify that with Mr. Serobian, because once that began to happen, I wasn't there personally. Mr. Serobian?
According to the?
Can you please come to the mic?
According to Jim Moore, we were at the property line, but we were right against the fence, not on the other property.
We did do a survey, and it showed us that it, the property line is actually a little bit further down, and I believe-
So we were in, within our property.
But it was a little too close to the fence, so that's when we started-
It was right against the fence. So when we found out, it was seventy-five feet. So right away, I made the decision to move everything out of that seventy-five feet. So that's why we put the pots down the terrace. And I'm really sorry about grading without a permit. We just-
When did you find out that you were within the seventy-five feet? Before your application or afterwards?
Afterwards.
We did the survey right when we received the denial letter to make sure, I wanted to see personally, where is, where is our property line, because it wasn't clear. I looked at the picture that was submitted to, with the application. It was just not clear to me. So we decided to hire somebody to do the actual survey.
So that was after you submitted the application?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that? Can I use your name?
Of course.
Nury?
Yes. Thank you.
In your appeal letter, June twelfth, you addressed it to Mr. Contreras, and on the second page, you say that one of the items that you corrected was to remove all plants and pots from the seventy-five feet setbacks. Parenthesis, note that after Mr. Serobian's staff moved the pots, a survey revealed that they were in compliance from the beginning.
I would like to retract that statement if possible. I-
That's an incorrect statement, I think.
That's, yes.
Okay.
So, let me correct that. We found out about the seventy-five feet setback when the code enforcement was there. Last year, when I had the lawyer taking care of this, she never notified me that we're in, within the fence lines. You have to move. So when I built the garden, it was just there, and I never touched it.
Well, after you found out that you were in violation of a seventy-five-foot setback, why didn't you just remove the plants that were within the seventy-five feet, rather than go and do a whole lot more grading to put plants on?
I did. The grading was done before the code enforcement came. So I didn't know about the seventy-five until the code enforcement came.
Wasn't there grading done this year?
Yes.
It was three days prior to code enforcement coming to the site.
And that, the grading that was done this year, was that for purposes of cultivating on it?
Honestly, yes. But I didn't know when we were doing the grading, it was like, we didn't know that we had to be seventy-five feet away from the property lines.
On May twenty-fourth, there's an email from Mr. Watts to Nury, asking, "Who did you speak to in the planning department regarding the grading and moving the cultivation area?" Your reply, the same day, said that, "From my notes, I spoke with Miguel a few times and Scott." Did you talk to them about the need for grading permits, or that it was a violation that you couldn't work yourself out of? Actually, I'm looking at-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. When I was speaking with planning about the grading, I was informing them that we had hired engineers to continue with the grading permit. And I'd ask, is there a point of continuing to put up a fence and everything else and spend all this money to, to, to seek remedies for grading? And I had never received an answer saying, "Okay, no, we're going to deny you regardless, because black and white, it says you cannot grade." There's absolutely no point for even putting up a fence, doing all the locks, everything else. Why would we do that?
Same concept. You worked with Cal State Engineering, Mr. Jeff Moreland. Did he or anyone from Cal State warn you that the grading was-
Never once.
Something you couldn't correct?
No. He specifically stated he deals with a lot of cannabis-related properties just for that reason. And that's when I learned about Ms. Sarah Hudson's case.
I believe you just said that planning never told you that it was incurable. Did the planning ever give you the impression that it could be cured?
Absolutely. By letting me know, I have to go to Public Works, get it, get a, get a grading permit from them.
But that's, that's the person you can't remember who, who it was?
I do not. I apologize.
But did Miguel or Scott ever indicate that it was curable?
I have not spoken. At that point, I did not know that Miguel had our file. I was, I was first speaking with Mr. Watts this entire time, and then I think I learned about Miguel. I can't remember Miguel.
All right, so the-
The email I just pointed out is May twenty-fourth, where you say in that email that you spoke with Scott and Miguel.
Yeah, it was a phone conversation. I would call, call into the department and let them know this is what's happening.
Does anything they said lead you to believe that you could have corrected the grading problem by getting a grading permit?
The only, the only instruction I received from the planning department is to go to Public Works to get a grading permit. And they already knew about the case. They already knew that this is cannabis-related, and they knew that the grading was, took place just a few days ago, or a week ago.
Mr. Watts in the Code Compliance department was pretty, pretty clear about that.
Mr. Watts from Code Compliance was pretty clear when he said you also need to speak to the planning department immediately, as this work could jeopardize your application. So you were being told that there is the possibility that the grading was going to jeopardize the application, right?
Correct. There is a jeopardy. However, it seemed like from all of the correspondence, even the emails, we were able to fix that and come into compliance.
When did you install the fence?
We installed it, let me think here.
Okay. Before we continued to install the fence around the whole property, the garden I had by the property, it was fenced. And then I extended the fence, putting it throughout the property.
When did you do that?
That was between the tenth and the twenty-fourth deadline. So within that timeframe, we hired a lot of people to install the fence.
In two thousand and seventeen?
In two thousand and seventeen.
So it was not fenced for a whole year?
Correct.
No, it was, the garden was fenced.
Partially fenced.
Okay.
So when I decided to-
Move.
Expand, expand the garden, then I fenced the whole thing, taking down the front portion of that part and then extending the whole fence.
Okay.
God, I think I'm still a little unclear on one thing. We, we have pictures of grading in May of this year, substantial grading in May of this year.
Yes, sir.
And that's to put cultivation on, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When did you figure out that you were in violation of the seventy-five-foot setback?
When the code enforcement came to complain about the grading, they told us. Then I find out about the seventy-five-foot setback.
So that wasn't until what?
May tenth.
May tenth.
May of this year.
May of this year.
I cultivated last year, same spot Miguel showed on the picture. I had my, submitted my paperwork, and nobody told me you have to be seventy-five feet. And I thought I was in a perfect zoning. But because I was paying for twenty-two thousand square feet, so I thought I can expand. I didn't think, and the grading, I didn't think it was, honestly, was that much. But it was, we had terraces, but it was brush terraces. So you kind of exposed it. And I'm not going to say it was not much of a grading, but there was grading.
So the attorney you hired out of Sacramento didn't clear any of these issues with you, telling you you're out of compliance in multiple areas?
The attorney in Sacramento had stated that she went to the property, and she looked at everything that we have out there, and we're currently in compliance. She continued to open a corporation, which is Choices For You. After that, we haven't heard from her. That's when I was in, in the hospital. And when I came back and I let her go, let her and her firm go, I requested to see all correspondence, all the work that has been performed on our case. And she provided only invoices and stated in the email, "We've never went to the property. We just went to the planning department."
How many square feet did you basically lose because of the seventy-five-foot setback, if you didn't replace it?
Before, what, last year, if I was doing it last year, maybe, I was, I was not even doing half of twenty-two thousand square feet.
How much?
Not even half of twenty-two thousand square. If we're counting as a canopy, not an area, if it's twenty-two thousand canopies per plant, I was maybe doing six thousand, less than six thousand.
Less than two thousand?
Yeah, six thousand. I have hundred and eighty, I had hundred and eighty-six plants. So I said, the pot is about six by six, and the plant will grow seven by seven. So forty-nine canopy per pot, a hundred and eighty-six pots I have.
And how many did you have to move?
I think I moved a hundred and fifty, may, maybe a little less to balance. And I added more pots for this year.
We have not cultivated this year by the-
But we didn't cultivate. We just stopped.
We do want to fix the erosion issues and grading.
Well, under your site plan, you would not have been within seventy-five feet of the property line with your grow, correct?
Last year.
Last year.
Hundred percent. I was shocked. That's why I started calling the lawyer, what's going on? And then she, basically, I fired her because of not letting me know.
So, so how did you wind up then with, with being within seventy-five feet of the property line?
I was never within seventy-five feet. I, I would did it with, on the property lines. And then when they came, I hired a surveying company to give me the seventy-five feet.
Did you have a fence there already? Was there an old fence along the property line, or what you thought was the old property line?
Yes. They were marked, martyrs.
Okay.
From the neighbors. I asked the neighbors. They said, "That's, that's your property. That's your property."
When you, when you had the survey done, was the old fence on the line or pretty close?
The old fence is right on the line, maybe even on my side, a little bit more on my side.
Okay, so-
We were never cultivating on other people's property.
So when the urgency ordinance went into effect with the seventy-five-foot setback requirement, you then knew that you were within the seventy-five feet, didn't you?
I was never notified about the emergency ordinance until May two thousand seventeen.
So you, you were cultivating then all during two thousand sixteen, the growing season, within the seventy-five feet?
Yes. Two thousand, by November two thousand sixteen, I had no plants over there after that.
Okay, looking at the site plan, which, which side of that property was your grow within the seventy-five feet?
Just the top terrace, just the bottom, the bottom, the hundred and twelve by three thirty-one.
Well, okay, which shows up on the bottom of the screen there?
From here down. No, actually, no, I'm sorry. From, from top.
Yes.
Just this top part. It was approximately width, it was the whole three hundred ninety-two long, but the width about a hundred feet, the most. So I was way over the property.
Perhaps if Miguel could go back to the exhibit that shows the property lines, and if you, these property lines aren't accurate, but if you shift that over to the south, to the, you know, below and left, that corner there should line up with the fence line.
Yes. The, after the survey was done, that's perfectly correct. We're not in other people's property.
Can you give us an estimate in terms of percentages of what percentage of your existing grow this year fell within the setback provision?
This year, none of it. I didn't grow anything this year. I didn't do anything this year.
You haven't grown this year.
So I removed all the, all the pots that, that it was within the seventy-five feet. I removed it and I put it into the, I had a red, my surveyor did a red line with the seventy-five-foot plant. So I took every pot and I put it into that, so I could be compliant with it.
We just never cultivated?
And I never did any, so.
Okay, I, I'm still a little unclear on how much of this grow or, or planned grow fell within the seventy-five feet?
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent, maybe more than ninety percent.
So your problem was if you didn't relocate the plants someplace else, you were going to lose ninety percent of your grow?
Yes.
And so you went ahead and did the grading?
Yes.
To accommodate space to put the plants that otherwise would have been lost?
Yes.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Worcester, I thought I heard the appellant state that he did the grading before he realized that the setback applied, that the purpose of the grading was to expand the garden from the ten or twelve thousand square feet that he had to the full twenty-two thousand that he applied for. And it was only until after that occurred that he discovered or was told that the seventy-five-foot setback applied. So it wasn't for the purpose of relocation, it was for expansion?
Yes. Yes and no, because seventy-five-feet setback, I heard from a neighbor. And I said, "Everybody else is on the property line," because I have neighbors. I said, "They're not seventy-five. They're not seventy-five." I started asking people. They say, "You have to be seventy-five feet." to be seventy-five feet. Okay, so I said, before the code enforcement comes, I have to move all these plants. So we didn't have any plants in there, so I said, just empty pots, we can leave it until we get to the surveyor. To get a surveyor in this county, it took, it took me a month, honestly, to get somebody to go do anything over there. So I had my neighbor, like, took a piece of paper and says, here's your corners, this is mine, I'm hundred percent, but he was not hundred percent because we, he ended up taking ten feet of our property, so I had to remove his fence too. It was just this whole misunderstanding of who has what, because everybody's cultivating and everybody wants their property.
But following up on, on Director Mars Domet, I do believe that you said in answer to, that, that the grading that we're concerned with here, you did before you understood. Well, just let, let me finish, so make sure that we, I'm quoting you correctly. The grading we're concerned with here, you did before you understood that there was a seventy-five foot problem or anything, it was not done because of the seventy-five foot requirement of the, of the ordinance?
Yes and no, I knew about the seventy-five, but I was grading not for the seventy-five. Expansion of my garden, but I was not sure that seventy-five applied because looking at the neighbors, and I asked them, they said, we never knew about this, none of the neighbors knew, so.
It was not the purpose of your grading?
Exactly, exactly.
To?
I'm not going to argue about that.
Thank you.
Okay, if nobody has any other questions, I'd like to go to public for comment, if that's okay with you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this appeal?
My name is Doug Beer, and I am in that area quite often, and I do know the neighbor to his immediate, that would be the immediate east, who is also a denied grow, who in fact has left the state and is now living in Alabama. And strangely enough, there is a lot of activity on his ground and in his Quonset hut, there is a very large grow. That's part of my suspicion, and that's all it is, but I have a, a strong opinion about, one, the fence that was put in, part of that fence is in the right-of-way for Rose Court. It's about two and a half feet into the right-of-way. Differing with the young lady who said the entire five acres, obviously you can see that, the entire five acres is not fenced. And in the last year, there's quite a problem with the water. That doesn't seem to be an issue here. All of the water for that garden on the left came from the neighbor's well, without that neighbor's understanding that it was being used for that. When that happened, obviously, they put their own well in. Now, that neighbor is trying to sell their property and a well that served them for well over twenty-five years, fine, had a problem last November because it, it didn't produce enough. And of course, my thinking is that it was pumped dry. All in all, the idea that these guys want to be a model, I'm not sure from what I know of that that's the kind of model this county wants. I'm recommending the denial.
Is there any further public comment? Go ahead and close public comment, and do you have anything to rebut on the other presentation?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify a few, clarify a few things. Mrs. Aforova's biggest contention is that, uh, planning staff was not clear with her. First off, Thomas Watts specifically instructed the appellant to contact planning regarding the new grading that had taken place. They never did that. If they came to the counter and asked just a generalized question about grading, they would have gotten a generalized answer about grading. To my knowledge, the only time I spoke to Miss Aforova prior to May twenty-fourth was on May twelfth. She called and she asked for a copy of the application pending certificate. She never asked about the current grading that had happened. And just to show that it's, it's hard for planning to give proper information when the appellant does not give us an exact picture of what's going on. For example, on May twenty-fourth, point blank, I asked Miss Aforova, why was this grading conducted? She said that it was not grading, it was scraping to remove vegetation and not for the purposes of cultivation. When I told her, I'm looking at these pictures and it's significant grading, it's not just for the purposes of, or for vegetation removal. She said, well, yeah, maybe it's excessive. When I said, do you have pots there? She said, no, it's not for the purpose of cultivation. I told her, I'm looking at a picture with pots here, she still contended that it was not for the purposes of cultivation and that the reason they moved it there was because code compliance told them to meet the seventy-five foot setback requirement. So how is, uh, how are we expected to provide clear and adequate information when they don't give us the full scope? Once more, if she had contacted us between May tenth and May twenty-fourth and said, code compliance was very specific that I contact planning about some new grading that I, what I conducted, we would have jumped on the aerials, we would have tried to elaborate what exactly what's going on. If she would have said, hey, this grading was done for cultivation purposes, then we could have said, hey, yeah, this is not going to, your, your application's going to be denied, but that wasn't the case. And that's all I have to say.
I wanted to add a couple remarks, see unless you have questions, you'd like to ask Miguel first?
I, well, I have some questions, but why don't you give your remarks?
Um, I just wanted to make the comments about Mr. Watts, his correspondence with the appellant, and also point out, Mr. Watts is here in the audience, if you have any questions for him, he's happy to answer them. In the original email, speak to the planning department regarding the grading that has been recently carried out on the property, he's in full. And at the bottom, he indicates, look at the planning department fact, the FAQ, he puts provided link for it. And then he wrote, pay particular attention to the section states, the requirements for compliance with the ordinance were expected to have been met the time your application was submitted. And then in his follow-up email, on the seventeenth, he said, you need to speak to the planning department immediately, as, as the work you've done can jeopardize your application. I, I, I think that Mr. Watts was pretty clear, I mean, his, his email doesn't, has contained that unfortunate preamble, that was the same language that he used in all of his letters, to every single site inspection to whom he gave a correction list, but in this instance, he provided as an attachment, the, the information sheet, which specifies what adequate evidence of correction is and contains the admonition regarding the fact that correction of the code compliance site issues must occur independently of whether or not you may approve by planning, saying that correction is not guaranteed, that your application will be approved. So I find it very difficult to conclude in looking at their correspondence, that she reasonably believed that correcting those issues was going to result in approval of her application. And again, Mr. Watts is here, if you'd like to ask any questions.
And I'd like to add one additional item, regardless of whether or not they were allowed to correct or not, they have to get a grading permit. They graded without a permit, and even if it was done not for cannabis, there's grading, potential erosion that needs to be addressed through getting a grading permit. And even if they are denied, they were denied immediately then, they would still need to get a grading permit and correct the problem of grading without a permit at any time. So the costs associated with hiring an engineer, it's something they have to do anyway, because they graded without a permit.
Miguel, you mentioned the conversation, I think you said on May twenty-fourth?
Yes.
And in that conversation, was it, I, I, I think, I'm going to have to ask you to, to replay that for me. Did you say to her, you're not in compliance with the ordinance, or?
Yes, I explained to her the whole process, I explained to her the, the code section, I explained to her that she was not being denied for grading without a permit, but in fact, she was being denied for grading after the May tenth to down the sixteenth deadline.
And the, and from what you told her, you felt that you were being clear that there could be no cure to that?
I was, I believe I was extremely clear, she, under my impression, when we hung up, it was pretty clear. I don't know how I could have made it any clearer, but once more, if she would have called with, after May tenth, after they received that correction notice, saying, hey, Miguel, look at this, we did this grading, it's for the purposes of cultivation, what's going to happen now? And I would have advised, hey, you know, you are going to be denied, but that wasn't the case. Nobody ever called planning department saying that. They might have called and said, hey, code compliance told me to get a grading permit, and of course, we're going to say, yeah, that's through Public Works, go to Public Works. When Public Work gets, uh, gets an application for grading, you know, they're not going to say, oh, this is an expansion, that's a violation of seventeen point one six five. They say, you know, here's a new application for grading, there's the steps that you need to follow. At no point was she clear saying, this is a new cultivation site or a new, a new grading for the purposes of cultivation.
So it's, it's, it's a question of, you didn't ever answer the question because the question was never asked, basically?
The question was never asked, yeah, definitely, you know? And at that time, between May tenth and May twenty-fourth, planning had vague knowledge of what was going on, you know, because the instructions to her was contact planning department and inform them of this, so you, so, you know, they could properly advise you.
When were you notified of that?
It came to my attention around the twenty-second, twenty-fourth.
Okay, so it was after she called?
Before she called.
So you knew about it when she called?
I knew about it, but what's it called, Thomas had told me that he had instructed her to call me, so I was expecting a call from her.
Have you seen, well, I know you've seen it, let's refer to the May seventeenth email from Mr. Watts to Murray. You just quoted the second sentence of the second paragraph, where he said, you also need to speak to the planning department, but the first sentence says, I have already sent some photos over to Public Works, they consider the work to be substantial grading, which will require a permit. Trying to see how that doesn't suggest to her that a permit would have resolved the problem, which is, I said, I think what she's claiming.
All grading requires a permit, regardless if it's for cultivation or not. I mean, the grading definitely required a permit, and still does. I mean, I.
But it's an incurable situation, the permit isn't going to, isn't going to get them an approval.
Sure, I mean, I, when Mr. Watts would speak to what he was in his mind when he wrote that, but he's a code enforcement officer, unlawful grading is a violation of our code. To cure it, you need to get a permit, and so it's, it's, it's not, I don't see that sentence as being in any way connected to whether or not her, her permit for commercial cultivation should be approved. She's conducted unlawful grading, he's conducted unlawful grading and it needs to be remedied.
I may, I may in fact agree with you on the vote, but I, I tell you what, that sentence, and that's has been in many emails for several situations, not just this one, and I think it does put out the wrong message to people, and, and I really strongly suggest, and I, rethink these things when you're sending them.
Absolutely.
Don't hit the send button until you've read them a few times and see what it's going to sound like to the other side.
Yeah, I, I understand.
I've done it myself more than once.
And that's in fact why we had the, the, the sheet that we added for the admonitions, and, and, and I don't review all every email that code enforcement sends out, and nor had they at that time been properly trained on it.
One thing, Miguel, in the staff report, it says, and this is toward the end, end of the last page, that the appellant never received any indication that their registration could still be denied, even if these violations were completed. Well, as, as was pointed out, the preamble statement in the, in the initial code compliance email does have the same implication as we had in the, in the Hudson case, almost identical language. It's just a question of what else was in that email, putting red flags on the fact that better talk with planning about this specific question and get, get planning's position on it. It's, but I, I think that the staff analysis overstates the, the lack of any indication that the, that could be cured. And of course, as you point out, there, the Hudson case did not have in the record the, the official one-page notification from code compliance saying that curing these things does not necessarily result in a granting of your permit. So that there are, there are certainly distinctions.
On, on that far, I'd like to make one more comment. I, a couple of nights ago, I watched the appeal of Carlos Garcia, which is heard by the body some months back, I had to review it because it's come up in litigation, and the, and during that hearing, that was one where the appellant alleged that staff had told him he didn't need to give a seller's permit or business license until his application had been approved. And the question came up and was raised by Commissioner Worcester, does staff have the authority to waive requirements of the ordinance? And the answer was no. And, and in this case, the fundamental purpose of the ordinance was to cease the expansion of cultivation in, in this county. And if, if we're to say that Mr. Watts can make statements via email that, that waives the requirement that cultivation be ceased, then, then he as a, as a lowly code enforcement officer would have the ability to single-handedly thwart the purpose and intent of the ordinance. I, I don't think we should say that.
Well, I, I think, as I read these emails one after another, I think that Mr. Watts was very clear on multiple emails. You still have to go to Public Works and get a grading permit, rather, I mean, no matter what, they're two separate issues. You've graded, you weren't permitted to do it, and we've got some erosion issues, you need to go to Public Works, even if you're denied, you need to go to Public Works. The second issue is speak to the planning department, your permit is in jeopardy. I don't see where he said, you're going to get permitted. I see him telling them, you're in jeopardy, speak to the planning department. The separate issue is go to Public Works, because Public Works is still going to require a permit, whether you're denied or not, you have to fix the damage done to this land. They're two separate issues for me. I don't see any issues here that even compare remotely to the Hudson case for me, they're two, they're, these emails were extremely clear from code compliance. And I, I, anyway, so I think we need to allow her to come back and do her rebut now, if you guys are okay? What? What do you want? You want a rebuttal, you want a rebut? I don't even know anymore, she corrects me constantly on that word. Please tell me what were you?
You want me to do this in public?
Yes.
Okay. Rebuttal is the noun, rebut is the verb.
Hi.
Hello. I want to address every comment chronologically, if I can. First of all, from the public, I believe that the opposition here resulted in a failed relationship between Mr., I'm not going to name the names of the neighbors that moved that were mentioned, and Mr. Serobian. In large part, Mr. Serobian did not allow the product to go interstate, and after the fact, there were a lot of personal issues that were happening, so I don't want to comment further on that, it's a separate legal issue that we're dealing with. It's a separate legal issue that we're dealing with. Now, in the response to Miguel stating that I have not spoken with him in regards to the grading issue, I did not know he was assigned to the case until between, somewhere in the 20th, May 20th, 24th. I can't, I cannot recall right now, to be candid. But I did personally drive all the way to Calaveras to go to Planning. Somebody directed me, I stated what was going on. I presented the case. I said, this is a cultivation area, this is cannabis-related. And we need a grading permit. Oh, yes, that's Public Works, go to Public Works, get a grading permit. I'm not denying that we're, we need a grading permit. We will continue with this because we've engaged Cal State Engineering. And we will address the issues, we will fix the erosion, just because, not only because we have to, but we have duty to do so for Mr. Moore. We promise to do that and we will continue with that promise. Now, verbal, I cannot account for verbal conversations. I have emails, but I also spoke with Planning verbally. Whether it's with Miguel or not, it was different people. And if the county staff is not on the same page, how can I follow direction? How can we, how can we follow the urgency ordinance if one person says one thing, another person is not clear about it? In fact, when I was submitting proof that we're not cultivating, just to make sure we're not getting penalized in the future, I had spoken with, I called code compliance and I asked, where can I submit these photos? Who can I submit photos to, to show that we are not cultivating? They had stated, oh, you're gonna have to call Planning. We don't know anything about that. I called Planning, I speak with Madeline. I tell her the same story, say, I need pictures to be submitted to somebody to make sure that they know we're not cultivating. I don't wanna get penalized. We've already spent enough money. She said, interesting, actually, you should probably call code enforcement because we don't deal with that. So how can I follow direction if nobody knows what they're doing? We need to establish a system, and I'm more than willing to help if I have to, to sit there, okay, let's create a system. Let's be uniform. Let's not have these issues. Let's have a cut and clear procedure, administrative procedure, not just the urgency ordinance. Not, you know, one person says this needs to be done and another person says, go to this department. I want, I want uniformity. And I, we will continue with the grading permit. We've already engaged the company, we can't take it back. I went to Planning Department, they instructed me to go to Public Works. I did so. I've complied with absolutely every direction I've received.
And when you went to the Planning Department, what you just said a few minutes ago was that we need a planning, excuse me, a grading permit?
We, yes.
Is that what you, is that what you said when you went to the Planning Department, we need a grading permit?
I went to the counter. Miguel was not there. I usually recognize people when I see them. I have a pretty good memory. I spoke with somebody else, it was a female. And I explained the situation. We got a denial for our cultivation site and we have a grading issue. And it says that we can come into compliance by getting a grading permit, get all the fencing up, and that's what we did. And I had stated, what do I do next? They say to go to Public Works, get a grading permit and continue, and become, and come into compliance. And it says that in the emails, it says that in the correction notice from Mr. Thomas Watts.
It doesn't specifically say, if you get a grading permit, you will come into compliance and you will be able to continue to have a permit. It does not say that. It gives several warnings about you need to talk with Planning. You have a separate notice saying compliance does not necessarily mean that you will, your permit is going to be granted. There are several warnings there.
Absolutely, and I think it's more of wording, choice of words. You will, you will need the grading permit in order to come into compliance. So how can I say, I can come into compliance by getting a grading permit? It didn't make sense to me.
I don't see that particular language in this notice.
It was in the correction notice, in the email. In order to come into compliance, you need to do XXXX.
There are several departments, and each department has a separate function in our county. Code compliance, I think, was very clear. The Planning Department is a different issue. And then, when I'm reading your email here from May 24th, you appear to be somebody who takes very good notes. And you point-blank say who you spoke to. From my notes, I spoke with Miguel a few times and Scott. You are documenting who you talked to, but at the one point where you're saying someone gave you information that wasn't good, that's the only thing that isn't documented. Everything else is. I think that when they're saying you need to come into compliance, it means that whether you have a growing permit or not, or registration, you're out of compliance with the county for grading the land and erosion issues are taking place. Those are two completely separate issues for me. So even if you're denied, you're still gonna be dealing with Public Works. They're two separate issues. And so to say that it's convoluted and one department doesn't know what the other department is doing, that's because Planning Department doesn't enforce the grading permit Public Works does. Code enforcement is telling you, and they were very clear, you need to go to Public Works, you need to go to the Planning Department. I don't know much how much clearer they could've been. For me, I read it and I think code compliance did a good job. They told you where to go. The Planning Department did their job, which was to deal with your registration because that's what they were being assigned to. Public Works is dealing with your grading and you've already stepped up and hired an engineer to take care of the problems that exist. I think you followed through with these emails and it's moving forward the way it should. I don't see miscommunication between county departments in these emails.
Perhaps it was on my end.
I don't know that it was. I mean, I can see where there's a lot of panic and confusion when you think you're gonna lose your license.
It was a very short amount of time. I had to drive back and forth. I couldn't take notes right there and then in front of the person and ask them who they are. They were in a hurry as well. When I was on the phone, it's a different story because I'm sitting in front of the computer. I can notate, okay, I remember now who I'm speaking with.
Right.
It's, it's a lot, this is so brand-new to everybody. It is. And I'm hoping in the future, it's gonna be a lot more clear, staff will be more, more, I don't know how to say this. Other people like us would at least clarify multiple times, is this what we're doing? Can we do this? Can we, that's all I can say.
Well, the urgency ordinance is basically your bible to get this done. And staff follows that, so if you have the urgency ordinance in front of you, you can pretty much predict what's gonna come out of anybody's mouth in the Planning Department. They're gonna refer you to that chapter of the urgency ordinance. Nothing changes.
I understand that.
That's, that's how it's gonna work. But I think at this point, we, unless you have anything further or there's any other question from commissioners, I'd like to wrap it up.
I just wanna make one last comment. We would not have put up a fence and used so much labor to just think or assume that we're gonna come into compliance. Yes, grading, grading is a different issue. We're going to take care of that. We did damage.
Thank you.
And we will fix that.
Thank you.
But the rest of it, we wouldn't have put up a fence. We wouldn't have done all of that had we known that this is, the rest of it is non-correctible. We wouldn't have. We were in the negative last year. We were in, we're in the negative this year. We're trying to keep payroll up. We have employees that are homeless. We wanna make sure, we put them in a home to just make sure, okay, stay, stay here. Let's just figure out what's happening with the Planning Department. Let's, let's talk to the commissioners. Let's see if we have a chance, because it seemed like we did. If we didn't, we would've taken those kids and we would've put them at another site. Okay, you guys can work here. You have a job. Right now, it's just not clear. If we were clear, we wouldn't have put up a fence. We wouldn't spend the money. We wouldn't be here. We would continue with the grading permit and that's it. Not waste your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
Okay. It seems to me that we have a case where there was grading after May 10th to expand the grow. And that is just flatly prohibited by the urgency ordinance. And that's, it's kind of a simple issue. With respect to the setback issue, the urgency ordinance is clear on how that has to be handled. And it has to be handled with the application for registration. Apparently, applicant was not familiar with that provision of the urgency ordinance. But the existing fence was a pretty good clue. If they had been familiar with the urgency ordinance, they would have known that they were likely within a 75-foot setback, which it turns out they were because the fence was very close to the property line when it was surveyed. So I don't think that there's a compliance with the seventeen point ninety-five, one sixty-five N seven with respect to the setback issue in any way, shape, or form. And what happened here is all of this grading took place before there were any of these emails about you have to have a grading permit. It was all done by May 9th. That's what set all this off. So there was a violation there that could not be corrected under the urgency ordinance. And yes, there was correspondence about getting a grading permit, which they had to have anyway. With respect to the fence, it should've been up over a year ago, by June 30th of 2016, and it wasn't. And so I can't get too upset about the money that was spent, that should've been spent a year earlier. And lastly, the correction notice does state at the end that correcting these violations does not guarantee compliance with the urgency ordinance or that you'll get a permit. So that's my view of it.
I agree with Kelly. And I guess one of my issues with this one is this with many of the other ones, is they say they didn't know. They didn't know about the setback. They didn't know about, it's in the ordinance. You did know. If you didn't get the ordinance and you decided to have a grow, I kinda have to say, in my opinion, that's your fault. You should've read the ordinance before you spent any money doing anything because the ordinance was the rules. And that's all I have.
I agree with the conclusions just stated, and I would still ask that we revisit our procedures because I do think there may have been misleading statements. Has anybody ever explained why this is happening in 2017 in May and not before that? I haven't quite figured it out. Why such a big delay?
Because we had over 750 applications.
Okay, all right. It just seemed like there's some gap.
Well, and the grading, grading didn't happen until, wasn't happening until May of 2017. I think the violations are clear. I think it's important that our decisions be uniform. And I think that requires at least a reference to the Hudson case. And I think there are distinctions here from the Hudson case. One very clear one is this correction notice form that is put out that specifically says, correcting the violation listed above does not guarantee that your application will be approved. That plus the several very distinct indications in the correction email itself made it clear that they should go to Planning and make a very clear case. This, this is why we are here. And I think showing up at the Planning desk and saying, we need a grading permit, does not satisfy that situation. So I think there are clear distinctions from the, from the Hudson case. And I think we made it very clear when we decided the Hudson case that we were deciding on those distinct facts. And I'm not ready to go any farther, further in finding a forgiveness for a violation.
I don't think that I need to keep adding to it. I'd like to hear the recommendation.
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017 dash zero six zero, thus denying 2016 dash nine seven zero appeal, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016 dash nine seven zero.
Okay, one typo in the resolution. Second whereas paragraph refers to commercial cannabis registration 2016 dash five two zero. Should be 2016 dash nine seven zero. Correct?
Correct.
Can we get a motion, please?
With that amendment, so moved.
I second that.
If they're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, so for zero one.
And just again, admission that this action is final unless appealed within 15 calendar days to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, and item number four is being continued. No study session today. Do any of the commissioners have anything they would like to report out on?
No, ma'am.
No.
Just a question to the directors for where our schedule is as far as the cannabis ordinance.
He'll do it.
Might be considered.
He's gonna do that on your report?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I just have a quick question on the Sarah Hudson. She had stated that she would come back and keep us posted on where things are at. I'd like to ask that she come back and talk to us and let us know where she's at. I think we've seen some photos that are pretty disturbing. And I'd like to ask if we could make a phone call and ask her to come back and speak to us. She made the statement she would do that when we approved.
We will contact her and suggest that.
Thank you.
I don't know if we can compel her, but we can suggest it.
I know we can't compel her, but she made the commitment and let's see if she holds up.
Well, can I add to that? I think code compliance is following up anyway, right?
We're doing follow-up with her, and I know code compliance and the Public Works Department are following up.
So if she does say, I'm coming on a certain date, does that code compliance also?
We can, we can do that.
Okay, that's it. Now your turn.
Well, Tim, I guess suggested or requested that provide an update on the cannabis ordinance, EIR. And still working with the consultants to complete the response to comments. I expect to have that within the next few days. We'll need to review it internally as well as with outside counsel. Make sure that we feel comfortable that the consultants did, you know, respond properly to everything. And then, once that's done, then we'll release it for, you know, public viewing and get it to you and then provide sufficient time to schedule a hearing.
And since I'm a newbie here, this will be scheduled, the ordinance itself and the EIR will be scheduled for consideration on the same.
That's typically the process that's done.
And with the, with the very optimistic view that that's all gonna get taken care of in one hearing day.
You know, it may very well be that we'll set a special hearing for that. And lots gonna depend on, you know, when the document is completed, you know, how much time. I wanna make sure that you guys have enough time to really review it sufficiently so that you feel comfortable and make a recommendation to the board on it.
Can we set a hearing that runs from day to day until completed, instead of coming back in a week or two?
We can do that, however you feel, whatever you want. If you wanna, you know, continue on to, on to the next day or, you know, if we wanna do it on a Thursday and a Friday or, you know, whatever works. We're willing to accommodate that.
Well, I'd rather not drag this on for weeks if we can do it in two days instead of two weeks.
And we would agree with you, and I'm sure the board also wants to get this wrapped up as quickly as we can.
We had a target date, I think, of August 24th of this year earlier. Is it your best estimate that that? Is it your best estimate that that's still on, or will it go past that?
At this point, given the fact that I still have to review it internally, we want outside counsel to review it. We want to give you enough time. Unless I have it in my hand, say, tomorrow, and counsel can review it within a couple of weeks, that still gives you, you know, maybe two weeks to read a document that's probably going to be fairly substantive. You've seen the comments, and we've got to respond to all those. Now, some of those will be, you know, a single response to multiple comments because they're essentially the same comment. But it's still, you know, there's going to be quite a bit of information in there. So I'm thinking at this point in time that setting a special hearing for the following week on the 29th might be a good way to go. But again, I, you know, maybe just sort of hold that in reserve if we can. You know, if we're ready by then, that would be good. Otherwise, maybe the first week of October.
October, October?
September, excuse me. No, no, no. I was getting ahead of myself there, or getting behind myself or whatever. I still would like to try to hear it in August. You know, the board is very anxious to get this done. You know, I have had my marching orders to get it done as soon as we can. I know it's taking a lot longer than anyone would like or expected, including myself. But as I've said many times, we want to do it right rather than rush it. And I'd rather, you know, have it delayed a couple of weeks or a month rather than have to go back and, you know, spend another six months redoing it. So we want to make sure that our responses and the adequacy of the IR meets legal muster.
And I very much appreciate your concern that we have enough time to consider it before we're here.
And then Annette, we were going to try to set up a special meeting to get things moving along. Did we come up with a date for that?
That would be up to you.
Yeah, right now, I mean, I know that you, you were concerned that you would not be available. I think someone else, Mr. Patel, you're going to be out the third week of August.
Last week.
The last week of August.
Starting the 26th.
Okay, you're going to be gone that week, so that's going to put a glitch in the program. You know, just trying to work with everyone's schedule, particularly summertime, people on vacation is difficult, setting special hearings. Right now, we're sort of in a lull in the appeals. They sort of come in waves as we are able to focus on action on the actual applications. So we'll send out, you know, a number of denials. Then they'll come in, you know, then the appeals will come in. So then we focus all of our time, all of our efforts on the appeals. And so they sort of, you know, we switch back and forth between processing appeals, working on the applications, processing appeals. So we don't really have a lot of appeals coming up immediately. We've got quite a few that will be ready on the 24th, but nothing sort of before that. If anything, we might do something in September, not October, but September, if we, if we need a special hearing. It really sort of depends on just the number of applications we have and other, other things. Now, next meeting, I know that two of you will be gone. We do have a couple of items, but we did not schedule any appeals. We pushed those back to 24th just because, you know, most likely we would have continued those anyway, so.
You're not looking at me when you say two.
Tim and Lisa.
So we're going to need a chairperson for the next meeting on August 10.
Oh, Kelly for sure.
Kelly for sure.
Wait, wait.
I am not, I'm not going to.
Who is the vice chair, and who is the second vice chair?
Vice chair.
The vice chair.
Do we have a second vice chair?
We just invited one. His name's Kelly Rooster. Commissioner Rooster.
Short straw Rooster. That's all I have, unless there are other questions. I guess, I'm sort of in a similar situation with the general planning EIR, expecting to have an admin draft of that, you know, soon, within the next couple of weeks. So I have two big documents that need to be reviewed, both internally as well as with outside counsel. So I'll have a lot of reading over the next several weeks.
Okay, six seconds. And I have plenty of time for reading coming up, so. Okay, so is that it? Anybody else have anything?
No.
All right, then the meeting is adjourned.